This is a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This evening, item number 1, 80 Sherwood; item number 7, 206 Shore Road; item number 8, 62 Byram Terrace; and item number 9, 29 Davenport are being postponed. Item number 2, Robert J. Natali.
Before we start, I have a couple pictures I'm going to pass out for the trees in question along the eastern property line.
All right, good evening. Good evening. My name is Robert Natali. I'm the property owner of 259 Pembroke Road. I purchased the property in September of 2015 as a primary residence for my family. In the interest of full disclosure, aside from being the property owner, I'm also a professional engineer employed at Rocco v. DeAndrea and also the certifying engineer for the proposed modest development before you. The subject parcel encompasses approximately 18,500 square feet in the R7 zone. Under existing conditions, the parcel supports a single-family dwelling, detached garage, asphalt driveway with associated site improvements. The proposed development includes a subdivision of the parcel into two lots, parcel X and parcel Y. Parcel X, which would be the western lot abutting Pembroke Road, would have a total area of 7,600 square feet and would retain the existing dwelling and associated site improvements. The existing dwelling would conform to all yard setbacks and FAR requirements. Parcel Y, which is the eastern lot, is designed as a rear lot and would have a total area of 10,909 square feet. The accessway, which is 20 feet wide, would be 2,303 square feet, leaving 8,606 square feet for zoning purposes. Parcel X and parcel Y would both conform to lot frontage, lot shape, lot area, and green space requirements. The development plan before you demonstrates that parcel Y can be supported with the available utilities within Pembroke Road, and then onsite sales are adequate for drainage purposes. The proposed dwelling depicted on parcel Y has a gross floor area of approximately 2,700 square feet, which includes a two-car garage at 5,000-- excuse me, 576 square feet on the first floor. In yesterday's meeting, there was some question about the lack of open space for the proposed development. In my opinion, the open space is an option or a tool that can be used as part of a subdivision design. Typically, when we do these subdivision designs, we use the open space to protect natural resources, whether they be wetlands, woodlands, steep slopes, or low-lying areas. In this situation, there's basically a lack of natural resources, nothing of nature to protect. I believe the open space in this situation is not warranted for this modest development as the proposed lots are small, and the introduction of the open space would be onerous and unfairly compacted development. If you did propose an open space in this situation, you would basically be protecting about 1,000 square feet of manicured lawn in perpetuity, which, in my opinion, really doesn't add much value to the neighborhood in total. The proposed development calls for the removal of three trees along the eastern property line. The removal of trees is not arbitrary. They were selected for a specific reason. The trees pose a risk to the safety of my family and also the neighboring property to the east. If you check out the pictures I got there, on the top picture, we have a-- there's a 24-inch maple on the left and a 36-inch, which what I believe is a horse chestnut on the right. The base of the horse chestnut is starting to rot, which, you know, means the tree's going to start to go. And the 24-inch maple is leaning severely to the west, which encroaches into our rear yard recreation space. To compound the issue, all the trees along the eastern property line are situated above shallow ledge, and I think you can see that within the pictures there. The roots are out of the ground. On a sunny day, the trees are stable, but after a week of rain in full bloom, they have the potential to become unstable under saturated soil conditions. And unfortunately, we had this situation play out on the property to the south of the development a couple months ago. We had a week of rain and a large maple tree during one of these, you know, freak wind storms over-tot and uprooted. And luckily, no one was hurt or injured, and nobody's house was damaged. But, you know, that's kind of the same situation we're in with all the trees in the back property line. And with the increased frequency intensity of the storms, you know, we just see that the removal of these three trees is to, you know, ensure the safety of my family, you know, possibly the occupants within the new development on parcel Y and also the neighboring property to the east. In summary, I believe that this is a modest development, and it conforms with the character of the neighborhood, and it provides an additional housing unit in the desirable and affordable area of town. And with that, I'd like to ask the commission to approve the proposed subdivision as designed. And in the absence of Mr. DeAndrea tonight, I would just say it's a good plan, just to make sure we got that on record.
Well, you got that line down. And then you know what the response is.
Yes. So with that, I'll turn it back to you.
The open space is not being asked for on this project. It's asked for on all projects where it's possible. And certainly, it is possible in this project to provide the open space. Now, it may be manicured lawn now, but you're removing the obvious place to have it placed would be along the east-- I think I'm right-- east property line where the trees are coming out. And I think that it can be accommodated there, and it could be replanted and so forth, and it would provide some additional open space, if you will, in the neighborhood and also to your property. So all projects that we've had that kind of come in, if you have extra square footage in a lot, such as in a 7,500-square-foot zone, if you're providing 76, 70, whatever, we ask that you provide that difference in open space. I think it can be done along that property, and like I say, it would work, and I think it would be a meaningful addition of open space. And I would feel, as I did in the briefing yesterday, that it should be added. There are-- as you look at your development plans, both along the road coming in and along the development for the house, and I know that this is getting ahead of the subdivision, however, I do notice that you're using retaining walls which exceed the 2'6", which are permitted in the zone. Now, I think around the proposed house, that might be easy to accommodate. I'm not sure if it's as easy to accommodate on the road coming in, but that's something you'd have to resolve.
Well, it's an interesting question. I think the deepest part-- let's see if I can take this out of here. The deepest part is actually-- or actually, say, the highest part of the wall along the road is here, which becomes three feet where we're containing with the--
It's a little more to your left, but okay.
Okay, yeah, you're right. What's interesting, though, is the retained height is actually six inches less. I'm using the wall as a curb. So in theory, you have 2'6" retains, but the wall is actually three feet high.
If that's, in fact, the case, but the bottom of the wall is on the other side and the top of the wall on this side, if you are leaving a six-inch curb there, that's fine. The walls around the house, though, you're getting into four feet there.
On the south side here. That's no big deal. We can step--
No, I understand. I'm saying because that's really not before us on the subdivision primarily. What's before us tonight is the open space, number one, and the map. If you're-- well, I don't know. I feel it should be there. Because everybody else has been treated the same way, and I don't-- you're not being--
Well, I think if the open space in this instance, especially on these lots, these are relatively small, so you start thinking about the FAR. So in this instance, the total area, I think, or the total FAR in the new house is about 2,700. So you take away 600 for the garage, you're left with a 2,100-square-foot house, which is not much. So if you take--
That's a marketing problem. It's not before this commission.
I mean, the other side of it is I'm not sure that the eastern property line is going to be susceptible to planting, and that's the issue with the trees is its ledge.
It seemed like a simple thing to put on a map and draw and to come up with what it would look like. I mean, if it's better on the southern side, that's not being determined by-- that's up to you. There was some note in your-- in the report that-- was there a previous subdivision done on this property?
Not on this property. This was part of the larger, I believe it was the felt--
About a long time ago?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. DPW has a couple of things, but I believe those are just notes that would go on a map.
Yeah, they had a couple with the site distance easements.
So I think we need to see a different plan.
All right. Well, I guess I can send another proposal in, but, you know--
No, you just modify this one. You're not any problems on timing.
I mean, is there a way that we can propose a conservation easement so we don't lose FAR?
No, I don't think that's appropriate because we ask for open space, fee open space wherever we can get it. I mean, if there's a reason that it can't be obtained, we do the conservation easement in lieu of it, but as you said, there's nothing to conserve on this property. So what we're going to do is ask you to provide the open space and then a planting plan for it, which will, you know, enhance it. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
I guess I'll get back--
We'll leave it open.
There was also the issue of the access easements and the utilities that need to be shown.
I did mention that.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, it has to be on the filed map, but yeah.
This is a must-- well, actually, I should ask you this. This is a must decide at our next meeting. Would you be able to revise your plans and get it resubmitted by then?
It's a possibility, but can I apply for an extension?
Yeah, no, you've got enough time.
Okay.
You can just give us an extension. But for us, the way you've got it right now is it's a must decide on the 26th, but you've got time until the 25th of August.
So the meeting after that would be July 10th, if that's better for you. Do you think you want to give us the extension now?
I think I'm going to give you the extension, just in case.
Great.
If I can get it in, when do I have to have it in by?
Ideally, early next week.
Early next week?
Yeah, as in Monday.
As you know, we only meet once in the beginning of August, so that would be the latest if you want to get it done.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. For the record, Eric Brower on behalf of Palmer Island LLC. We were last year before you was in March, and there was a lot of discussion about a lot of issues. The commission raised quite a number of questions and concerns, particularly related to DEEP and DPW. And so we said we would return once we had addressed or resolved those issues. It took quite a deal of time back and forth with both the state and DPW. So we ran out of time and recently resubmitted the application, which incorporated the revisions that were requested by the various departments. I had asked in that resubmission if we would include the record of the earlier applications since there were a lot of maps, photos, exhibits, letters, and the like, so we don't have to go through a lot of that tonight. I wanted to bring you up to date where we have been over the last few months, and then I know the neighbors have concerns. They have an attorney here tonight who we have yet to hear from, so I would like to hear that. With respect to the issue of the easement being required or not over the town strip that intervenes between our property and the actual South End Court right-of-way, we are having that briefed. We did engage Chip Haslin, who's putting together memorandum that should be available this week, hopefully, so that there'll be time for everybody to review that prior to our next meeting. Essentially, what happened, we made revisions with the engineering division. They were originally calling for a 22-foot-wide road. They accepted ultimately, through the commissioner's office, a 16-foot-wide road, which is on the current plans that we've proposed. DEP had a number of issues related to the individual development on Lot 1. We've subsequently revised that, although that's not on the agenda tonight. I guess we're dealing just with the subdivision. So in any event, we made changes for them. But with respect to the road issue, we went through the proposed widening, where its location would be. They had concerns that we not do any alterations within the coastal jurisdiction line, and our present plan shows that we are outside of that. We will provide Mr. Goucher with a section indicating that neither the road or the sloping shoulder will be required to go within that jurisdiction line. We also discussed with him his concerns about adequacy to minimize hazards due to flooding. And with the DPW, we made arrangements to have a plan prepared to reflect one of their concerns, and that is we are raising the elevation of the road from a low point of about 6'6" up to just under 8". Elevation 8 was the number that Scott Marucci determined was, that if we went any higher than that, we would interfere with drainage patterns in higher tide events, but not flood events. So we have plans that indicate that improvement. So we will-- before we come back in two weeks, we will have the issue confirmed with Mr. Goucher. Essentially, both Goucher and DPW indicated that they were satisfied with the technical issues of DPW, environmental of DEEP, but the issue of consistency with the Coastal Area Management Act and your 6-111 coastal overlay zone would be in your hands. So we are compiling information and briefing that item as well. So we'll have that to you this week as part of the other memorandum that's coming to you. I handed out just-- I said we've been through a lot of exhibits in the earlier submissions, so I've just provided some by way of background showing the neighborhood and the compilation, layout of the lots. We do have-- I was at the briefing yesterday, and obviously, there was quite a bit of discussion about lot area, what counts, what was deducted with Lot 1's front right corner. And so I did include on the last page one example that I was just able to find fairly recently. And at the briefing, Jody Couture, your zoning enforcement officer, was present, and he did repeatedly indicate that deducting for an overlapping front and side yard and/or a side and rear yard had never been enforced by his office. And I can confirm from my experience that that has been the case. And I think this one from last year on 636 Lake Avenue illustrates the original intent of that contiguous shape within the setbacks. And you can see on the site plan here, the A2 survey, that there is an odd tail that protrudes out to the back right, which does not have the required side yards that would have been what determined this shape. So this was deducted from the lot area, and that's shown clearly at the bottom of the survey, indicating lot area excluding insufficient lot width. You'll note that in the upper right-hand corner, we have a front and side yard that clearly converge on each other, and there was no requirement at that point for a deduction of zoning lot area. And I'm familiar with other cases, and we'll be able to put that together. I know Jody's also going to be reviewing his records. And I think moving forward, what's important is that we don't change interpretations without changing either the text or the diagram, because I think that's what we should be doing, because there's too many lots now that are very likely non-conforming as a result of approvals that have been given in the past. And I think, as the commission noted in the briefing, Jody's office, between the four of them, handle hundreds of zoning interpretations every day that do not come to this commission. When they come to you, he looks at them, and you look at them. But clearly, 90% of the cases where there's an opinion given on these interpretations, Jody does it, and there has been a consistency. So we'll definitely look into that further and give you--
I'm sure Jody will appreciate any help you can give him. Can that matter? Since in looking at this further, I feel that the problem that I think exists on Lot 1 in the front yard also exists on Lot 2 in the rear yard. And that's-- it's a funny thing because on all the drawings you've given us, I mean, I know it's a meandering rear yard line because it's mean-high water. But what's happened is that little piece that comes out-- Yep. Is-- I would raise the same issue about that one. So I agree with you. If it has been interpreted, and there are numerous instances where that case exists, or even a number of instances and so forth--
Right.
Then I think we need to come to some accommodation because it doesn't track the exact language of the text that we currently have.
Right. And we've lived through many revisions to what constitutes frontage, the lot shape, from how that evolved from the little shoe footage of 125 feet back. And we had the, what has obviously looked like a rear lot, was technically a front lot, didn't need a deduction. And we went through several revisions and iterations on that. But I will work with Jody on--
I'm sure he'll look forward to any assistance you give him, and so will I, as a matter of fact, so.
So I think those are the primary issues for tonight.
Just a couple of things that we haven't discussed. Just so we-- The right-of-way that you're putting on the thing has no meets and bounds on it, so it doesn't--
Yes, we owe you that.
So that needs to get done. Obviously, the name needs to be put on the open space of, you know, whoever's going to be owning that, not just open space. I think the diagrams on-- the frontage on Lot 1 is kind of tricky depending on how it's decided where the front yard ends and where the-- So that just needs-- that's just something that'll have to be resolved in the discussions going forward.
Yes.
But--
Okay.
Any other questions in the commission?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Edward O'Hanlon from Robinson &amp; Cole. I represent Norma Curland of 26 South End Court and Vera Lane of 20 South End Court, who are neighbors to the south of this proposed development. With me, Ms. Curland is in the back of the room, as is Ms. Lane. Ms. Lane has a brief statement she'd like to make to the commission before I move into my comments, if that's all right. And Jim McTye from Rosoli Engineering is with us tonight, too.
Hi, I'm Vera Lane, and I have resided in a small house next to Lot 2 on Palmer Island for 47 years. And I want to express my concern not only for the crowded visual effect of two houses, but most importantly, for the consequences of an additional building on the island. Palmer Island is, and always has been, an ecological bucolic wonder just two blocks from town. In order to preserve the appearance and ecological stability, my husband and I sold part of a buildable lot so that another house could not be added to on the island. Palmer Island is a delicate strip of land which needs to be respected by proper planning for protection from occasional flooding and not filled with additional construction. My husband, Richard Lane, passed away last spring. As an architect, he was a former co-chairman of the Architectural Review Committee, and as a dedicated conservationist, he was a board member of the Greenwich Land Trust. He took pride in his community's efforts to maintain appropriate buildings as well as its conservation endeavors. I'm speaking for both of us when I say the proposed plan of two houses is aesthetically inappropriate and ecologically risky. I want to thank the board for your thoroughness concerning a complicated project.
Ms. Lane's comments are a good segue into the nature of our objections, and I have a letter I'd like to hand out. But basically, they start with the point that she's made, that the beauty of this wetland resource is such that stacking two houses there, simply because the underzoning perhaps you can, is not consistent with the-- Yeah, here you go. Thanks. With the Coastal Area Management Act standards. There's two aspects of this that I'd like to get Mr. McTye to address first, and that's some concerns we have about the zoning lot area that I think the commission has already raised. And then also the question of whether the water quality standards should be applied to the right-of-way.
You can give them to me, and I'll just pass them on down where you want to--
Get going.
I'm just going to save one for now.
Good evening. Jim McTye from Rosoli Engineering. In reviewing the plans, I noticed on the topographic survey, if they have the base I noticed on the-- one of the topographic surveys that were in the file in regards to the marsh area. You can see in the photos that I sent you, these are three pictures of the marsh. The first one is taken from the roadway, looking down through this ditch here. The second one is about in the middle, looking across the marsh, and the third one is down, looking across this finger over here. And you can see on the plan here that they noted a 4 elevation. And I saw on a previous base map of existing conditions that there's a 3 topo line in this area that's not being depicted on this map, that's being depicted on this map, which means that there should be some additional mean-high water in this area. And I'd like to see some more spot elevations of the marsh so we can confirm where mean-high water is, because it could possibly also affect the land along the edge of the property as well.
What map are you referring to that had the extra?
This is the Boundary and Topographic Survey for Palmer Island LLC, TP2.
Okay, so TP2, thank you.
So you can see--
I see it.
--in that area in there. You know, and as you can see on the high ground, there's lots of spot elevations, so you can see that the contours match. I'd like to see some additional-- I'd like to see some additional spot elevations in the marsh area, so that we can confirm where mean-high water is.
I'm just curious, why, what would that, what would that mean to you, if it was a mean-high water?
Because in my, in my, in my notes, I saw that Eric showed this map to Jody detailing the mean-high water is, you know, from the mean-high water on this side, out to the property line, out to the property line, and back.
Right.
So it could affect the zoning lot area, it could affect the ultimate lot areas.
Well, it's all open space. It's all not being counted towards any of the lot sizes.
In a flat area like that, a slight change in elevation, that line could move a hundred feet.
So your concern is that even though this shape is shown, it does not have a, it doesn't have datum on it?
I'm concerned that the area is lower than the information that's presented.
Okay.
Which would affect ultimately the zoning lot area for the entire parcel. And then, I met with Scott Marucci last week, in regards to the new roadway. And Scott pointed out that he's not requiring water quality standards for the new widening of the roadway, and I was wondering why the town would not apply that standard to the roadway.
I don't have an answer for you. You could ask Mr. Marucci, but, why?
You know, with an ecologically sensitive area, wouldn't we want to provide water quality on a roadway that's going to be widened and improved? So, that's it.
That's it, thank you.
The other issues that we've raised in this, in our letter, and it harkens back to some testimony that was presented at the first hearing, is that, I believe it was Mr. Macri who asked the applicant, "Why wouldn't you go with one house instead of two?" And the concern being, obviously, with the amount of flooding. But there's a picture attached to our letter that shows the 1985 Hurricane Gloria, when the emergency personnel had to evacuate somewhere. But again, the idea, particularly as it relates to Mrs. Lane, you stack two houses, as you do in the middle of that property, you're not only going against the character of the neighborhood, but the question's been raised by several comments from various departments about whether that's consistent with the CAM standard of managing coastal hazard areas to, in a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized. So we'd submit that for your consideration. The other issue that I wanted to raise, and I—
I'm just curious, this, I wasn't, I was looking for the photograph. What house is this?
That is the, that's Ten South End Court.
Do you know which lot that is?
I just need some help from you or something. Show me which, on this map, which of the houses is— Can you tell me on this map, which of the houses that is?
Good evening, I'm Norma Curlin.
It's the existing house.
It's the existing house there that's right in the middle of the subdivision.
Yeah, I was looking at the subdivision.
Mr. Mailer.
Oh, it's the existing property. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
The one legal question that I would like to raise is, deals with the section of the town charter, Section 164, which provides that when a subdivision serves more than five lots, the private roadway should comply with the town road standards. Now, this subdivision already serves six lots, by virtue of some litigation, settlements of litigation, and that constitutes a legally non-conforming status. But with this subdivision, you're increasing it to seven lots. And again, that's contrary to the town— If you do that, then you must comply with the town road standards, which I understand are twenty-six feet. I say twenty-two feet in my letter, but in fact, I'd like to submit this from the Town of Greenwich Engineering Division, but it shows what the road sections are and its road standards are, and it's twenty-six feet for this zone. So the question that I have is, why is the town satisfied that this twelve-foot private roadway should be increased only to sixteen feet? When the town charter requires that if it's going to go over the number of lots, over five lots, then it should comply—
Well, it already is over five, it's six now.
I understand, but that's legally non-conforming, because the road doesn't—
Right.
—doesn't make sense. So if you're going to increase the number, to increase the non-conformity, you should bring it into conformity, not bring it sort of into conformity. But, so it just seems an arbitrary, and I'm not sure it's, I'm not preaching law to you all, but I checked with your legal department, whether, you know, that, you know, twelve feet being clearly non-conforming, twenty-six feet being conforming, how do you decide between those two what's appropriate? I would think, if you want to add, if you want to increase the non-conformity by adding a lot, you should bring it fully in compliance, because that's what the charter says. And then the second legal point we raised is regards to the easement, but I understand Mr. Brower has said that there's going to be a memorandum that deals with that, but I'll reserve comment until I see that.
Mr. O'Handlon, in the court document that dealt with, that dealt with the settlement, did you notice whether or not the court retained jurisdiction per that document? This is pertaining to your first point, about 6164.
I don't have it with me, but I'll check that.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know, thanks. I'll check that and get back to you. But I'm not sure why a court would, but at the same time, that's a big question, and I'll— So that, you know, in summary, again, we just feel that this is, and I believe the comment was made by Mr. Macri at the first hearing, why, why two buildings? Simply because, you know, you can. But the question is, it's out of character with the neighborhood. They're stacked right next to each other, and very close to Ms. Lane's house. It's going to cause the loss of a substantial, of a significant buffer. Ms. Lane's house is already on the northern side of her property. There's a, there's a very effective vegetative buffer right there that will come down. And then in order for these houses to comply with the flood, with the FEMA standards, they're going to be very, they're going to be high. So it's going to loom over the other property, and then, you know, again, there goes the character of the neighborhood. So for all these reasons, we'd ask that you deny the subdivision. And I'll get back to staff with that question, and reserve comment on the, I mean, on the easement issue, before I see Mr. Brower's memo. Thank you very much.
Won't be Mr. Brower, I believe, it'll be Mr. Haslam.
Mr. Haslam, right.
Doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
We met before at one of the earlier hearings. I'm David Robbins, neighbor on Palmer Island. Been there for forty years. I submitted a letter to you, I hope you received it today, or yesterday, which was from myself and the other neighbors who are here tonight, Chris Broderick, Ben Quick, and my wife Karen. And I would not cover old ground, because I know that, prefer we not do that. But I would just comment on a couple of things that have come up tonight. The attorney who just spoke noted, in addition to some of the very technical legal issues that he's raised with you, a couple of points about the neighborhood. One, maintaining the character of the neighborhood, and tying that together with legal issues of adding an additional house in an already non-conforming area. The other issue that came up in a legal context, but is also very important to us as neighbors and residents, is preservation of the road as it is. And I guess the question would be, with regard to the house, number of houses, the impact of crowding two very large houses at the entrance to Palmer Island changes the fundamental character as you enter into the island. As I've noted in earlier correspondence, the island was an island at one time, and although the church property was backfilled and appears to be contiguous to the island, creating a peninsula. In fact, aesthetically, when you come onto that narrow lane, you really are leaving the mainland and going to another place. Once the, so as you come down that lane, you enter into another world. I can't tell you how many people have come to visit and said, "I feel like I just left the city and went to the country." Part of that is the visual effect of coming onto Palmer Island and seeing the open space, which is preserved throughout the rest of the island. I would echo Ms. Lane's comments. My wife Karen and I bought the property next to us, which had been a separate lot due to the attempted subdivision back in the eighties. We bought that property and intentionally built across the line to remove it as a building lot. That was a big investment to preserve the open space on Palmer Island. Not really, from our point of view, to preserve property value, so I think really the value of the property on Palmer Island hinges not, in part, on the beauty of this natural environment, but really to preserve the space the way it's been for hundreds of years. So I think the crowding of two houses on there, notwithstanding, or in addition to whatever legal issues exist with regard to that, and you all know that better than I do, I think it's just unnecessary to burden such a beautiful, one of the few really beautiful idyllic remaining areas in Old Greenwich, with one more big house. It's just unnecessary. Apart from the aesthetics coming into the island, we as residents are passionate about preserving the twelve-foot lane. When you talk about it dispassionately, as a non-conforming use, and should it be sixteen? Should it be twenty-six? Once you change it, you've really changed something that's been there for hundreds of years. Palmer Island is one of the older properties in Old Greenwich, deeds running back to the 1600s. We would really hate to see, for the sake of one house, destroying this beautiful historic little lane that's absolutely charming, that harks back to another era, and that preserves a little piece of the history of Greenwich, which, as part of the planning that's going on in the community now, is recognized as an important part of what we should be saving to save the value of our town. So I would simply second what Ms. Lane said, and emphasize that notwithstanding the fact that someone might be able to justify the FAR and the other things that are necessary to plop another big house, it's just not the place to do it. It will destroy the character, and it will irretrievably change an historical spot in Old Greenwich. Apart from that, I think people spoken to the ecological concerns, and I hope that those will take into concern, because I can tell you just very quickly, we've lived there for forty years. The snowy eaglets come April 1st every year. We know which birds come, we know when the things are turning green. It is a magnificent space. Every little encroachment chips away at the value of this, and it's a process that will take place once the road is wide, another house. We need to preserve places like Palmer Island. So I just ask you to consider all that on top of the technical issues that are being thrown at you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to respond briefly, since we will be carrying this over, just to clarify, I think the question that Mr. McTeague asked was relating to—
Yes.
—spot grades on that side.
Yes.
So that land area is totally separated by the right-of-way. Because the right-of-way bisects the property, each of the proposed lots have to stand on their own in terms of lot area, lot shape, frontage, et cetera. So while we do have a total lot area, its only relationship is to determining the fifteen percent open space, which obviously, we have some thirty percent. So if we did have area below three, or lower, if that did deduct the gross lot area, it would deduct the required open space area. It's not going to come out of these lots or the right-of-way. So I don't really see any—
I think his question was, since it's not specifically shown, it could be anywhere. I mean, in a flat area, you know, it could meander, so I think it's—
Well, we're not going to go out and measure every little sinkhole to come up with that. We'll revisit that, but, but just for clarity, it's thirty percent of the land area, which is more than twice—
Right, I know.
—and the lots themselves are oversized. So I think we're okay with that. With respect to the road improvement issue, hopefully, Mr. Handlon will not prevail in getting a twenty-two or twenty-six foot wide road, because it sounds like nobody wants that. Matter of fact, when we submitted our application, we had proposed a sixteen-foot wide roadway, I'm sorry, twelve, with one small area of a pullover that would have accommodated two-way flow. So that was reviewed by DPW, first by Scott, and then with the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. So the provision of the Charter 164 has been clearly complied with. The Deputy Commissioner has opined that a sixteen-foot wide road is totally consistent with the needs of this particular private road with the two-lot subdivision.
Just sort of curious, how, what will that road be? Will it be a paved road, or will it be gravelled?
Yes. No, it'll be paved, yeah. So what we have there, there are six lots currently in the area now, and that shows on, on your diagram here. This would be a seventh. The, if we go to the subdivision that was the subject of the court cases, you'll see that there were proposed six lots, Lane was seven, and our house would be eight, even without being divided. So it was going to go from six to eight, and the subdivision was approved. The only reason it didn't move forward is that the Mrs. Wilson, the predecessor and title of our client, the applicant, was successful in not allowing the road to be widened. So not only did Scott Marucci and the commissioner determine sixteen feet was acceptable, they've, under the same charter provision, allowed sixteen feet to be the case where we had Nipwan Island down in Meads Point, it was the case on Chapman Lane. So there's, each of these cases get reviewed separately by the commissioner, and, sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors, approved the sixteen-foot wide roadway, because nobody wanted to see more impact than was required. Now, coincidentally, the sixteen feet came up back in 1980, and the stipulations that have already provided, and which Chip will expand upon, actually required a sixteen-foot wide road to be built for the six lots, plus the other two. So, but for Mrs. Wilson interfering with not allowing the expansion of the private road on her property, there would have been eight lots served by the sixteen-foot roadway. So there's a net reduction in what was evaluated years ago, to what has now been approved as being adequate. So those plans have been approved, and that's what will be part of our brief as to why we're relying on those. The, okay, so we'll comment on the easement, the charter provision. Now, the other thing, this photograph was taken clearly from further down on Palmer Hill, the boat, Palmer Island. The boat is heading back to South End Court. Our house, it sits here, which is the one in the middle of the subject property. So that, that boat is taking somebody else away. We will be, as part of our road improvement, raising the road, widening it, making it a safer place. We've also made recommendations as to how to properly inform people as to when they should be evacuating. Mr. Robbins testified at the last meeting that in the forty years he was there, he's never had a problem getting in and out during flood conditions, simply because he knows when to leave, which— So we are, in fact, improving conditions as a result of raising and widening the road. DEP has confirmed ecologically that with our reduced, with our revised footprints, that we've reduced the pressure on the marshes, and they find that to be acceptable. Conservation Commission staff noted our revisions and is satisfied with those. So—
There was a state— There was a statement made, I think he was talking about water quality?
Yes.
The claim was that it has not been addressed.
Right. That we can revisit with Scott. He's very stringent in his requirements. I don't know. We certainly have not done that with other road windings in those cases that I mentioned where a roadway is being merely upgraded. I think with a new road, clearly that would be the case. That was not an issue for Mr. Goucher either. But we'll revisit that.
Just revisit or just get a positive statement from
Sure. So with that, I would suggest we leave it open and work with Jody on precedent and get you some meets and bounds and address that at the
What's her name?
The name to where it's going to. There's a signature block in case
I know, I saw that, but I didn't have a name for the open space.
Okay. It's in the declaration. We'll put it on the map. Thank you.
This item is being left open? Generally, we allow the applicant to have the final word, but since it's being left open, thank you.
And next time will be the June 26 meeting, assuming we're getting that brief or note or whatever from Mr. Hasland in the next few days?
This week.
Okay, wonderful. So June 26.
Good evening again, Eric Brower, on behalf of Smokey Hill LLC and Robin Hill LLC. The applications tonight are in two parts. The first is a lot line revision, and then following the adjusted lot line is a two-lot subdivision. So the first one is a separate application for which the staff report goes in quite detail as to what the issues are. We've reviewed this with engineering, with Health Department as to any impacts, as to the effect of transferring the lot line. Essentially, we're taking about an acre from Robin Hill to Smokey Hill, was not part of any previous subdivision or re-subdivision, so we think that's
Did you ever get, did you ever get an answer for Jody on the FAR when you're removing this land?
He said, actually in his comment prior to his zoning permit, I think that the staff report said subdivision approval, but I read his sign-off as to
It would be, that wouldn't really work. I mean, if we approved this lot line revision, the land's gone. So I think he says the applicant should note the FAR for Seven John Street, which is the one I'm talking about.
Yeah. Well, he checked all three boxes, and the top one says, "Okay for zoning sign-off with the following"
When he puts that little note under it, that's, that's okay, I guess, if you give him this information.
All right, so we'll follow up with him. I don't think
What would be critical, I assume that you, if you're looking for an approval on this tonight, we would need that information, just to be
Right. Well, we're gonna, when we get to the next one, because of the issue with the site distance and scenic road and the trees and all that, we're going to convert that to a preliminary, so we can hold this open and let the two run parallel.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Because when, as you do, as you convert to a preliminary, that's because you're going to, or have you filed with ZBA or you're going to file?
Yes, this just came up last week.
Yeah, I know.
And with all the issues between the bats and the trees and so scenic road, we're happy to make that revision based on all the input.
It's open.
So we'll leave this open and that, so we'll
So you're gonna give us an extension on this?
Well, the problem with that, though, is if you're looking for an action on the preliminary in the next one, obviously they can't do that without this one. And then what are you gonna say to the zoning board of appeals when you try to get a variance per Section 6-20?
We'll, two things, I guess. One, if we could, we're, well, it'll be, we're not going to make it for the June ZBA. That's gonna be
Oh, okay.
A while. So we'll be able to have, by the time we file, we'll have enough time to come back, at least to address the
FAR.
FAR.
So you can do all of that by Monday, next Monday?
Could do what, the filing?
No, all of the, all of the issues need to be resolved on both of these.
Yeah.
On a preliminary basis, so that you can get on June 26.
I think so, yeah, depending on what Jody needs. We've got, the tax cards say we have $15,000 and like $1,100 or $1,800 on the barns, and we're allowed 26,000 square feet. So hopefully, it'll be a matter of getting whatever he needs to confirm that we're not near it with the 90% rule, whatever.
Because it seems you're clear of the septic, so that'd be the only other thing I can
Other issue. So, yeah, so we'll hold that open pending FAR.
Okay.
And grant the extension.
Sorry, go ahead, Kate.
And grant the extension.
We need one?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is 622, and our next meeting is
Yep, will do.
And actually, it's the same, oh, you're gonna convert the next one to a preliminary.
Any other comments from the Commissioner on this one? Any comments from the public on the lot line revision or the transfer of property, rather? Okay.
Okay.
Then we're opening up number five, which is Smokey Hill, two-lot subdivision, final subdivision.
Now converted to a preliminary subdivision.
Okay. So did you give us the paperwork, or?
I will before I leave. So again, Eric Brower for the applicant. So we have now, following the transfer of the additional acreage, two four-acre lots, one fronting, one rear lot, and a 15% open space easement across the rear of the property. There were comments
Can I ask you just a quick question, why it's called an open space easement as opposed to conservation easement? Is there a difference?
Oh, no. Well, you require, first it was park and playground, then it became open space.
But open space is sort of now fee open space, so it's just a
Well, we've done easement. I mean, if you want a different name, that's fine, but I mean, we've, we've done a number of them. The intent is the same.
No, I understand.
The restrictions would apply. It's obviously regulated by wetlands, but the buffer and all will still be included in the restricted area. Conservation had suggested some additional plantings in that area, which we're fine with being part of that restoration. But the real issue that came up was the concern about the driveway. Currently, the, in orange, is a drive that has been here for years and years, going up to what was the old house that's since burned down. To comply with zoning, we showed a new driveway within the 20-foot access strip to serve that and have the existing house utilize, I'm sorry, the new house on Lot 1 utilize the existing curb cut. So there were concerns raised. One, it's a scenic road. Two, to get site distances from here, mature trees would have to be cut down, and we'd be creating the additional curb cut within the streetscape. Also, if we were to construct this, Conservation staff was concerned about the loss of trees. There's a nice stand of mixed hardwood and evergreens in here. So if we move the driveway over, we eliminate the interference with the scenic road, we don't have to cut trees down on the road. The site distances for the existing driveway comply with just grass and overgrowth being cut down, not any, any trees. So that will require the variance. The other important part on the trees there is, Alex had mentioned, is that with the letter that we got from the state regarding the nesting habitat for the bats, that by maintaining that area on the north side, we would be keeping the habitat, which will work out, I think, for everybody, so.
Yeah, if you, if you would work that out with Conservation and have a plan.
Yep.
I think we, I don't know, were you there when we were talking? There was, during the briefing, we mentioned that there had an applicant that came in with the habitat well organized recently.
Organized?
They already had laid out a plan for the new, where they were gonna make habitat for the bats.
Oh, well, in this area, I mean, the letter itself from the state was, was least restrictive. It actually just said, be careful what time of the year that you're actually doing your activities.
Right.
So we're obviously not interfering with them. One, we'll be enhancing this area, and essentially what'll happen here is, I can bring photos the next time, but it's a dense wooded area
And you'll leave it.
Yes, exactly. So if we just go with the orange, which is there today
The shared, that's your, and you have shared
Yes, so this owner's gonna turn off, and this one, it's gonna take it right up to where it was. So by default, this area here will be protected, and we can
You're not gonna need to replace any of the habitat for them.
Correct. Yeah, that was, Alex basically had said, if, if we use that, that would be absolutely fine.
Okay.
With the suggested plantings in here, which is fine. So I'll give an extension, and we'll apply right away to Board of Appeals.
When you convert to preliminary, you just opened the preliminary.
The Health Department, I don't know if the change in the roadway affects any of the layout for the septic systems on these two properties.
No, because we were gonna maintain the, well, the septic for this lot is way up here.
Okay.
So we're gonna cut in front, and this house, the septic is here. So we're always gonna keep that, that minimum amount of, so there'll be no impact on that. We have to redo the drainage, just because it's changing things, but
Are you still going to be bringing the drainage from the rear lot up to the front when having that drainage easement in that sort of triangular piece between the roads?
That may become less necessary at this point, since obviously this was gonna be substantial new amount of asphalt, so the net-net may be such that we don't
Get rid of that.
Need that.
Okay.
We'll start on that part as well.
So the Commissioner agrees then, it's a good
It's a good plan.
It is a good plan.
Good plan to go to the Board of Appeals.
And you're not even Tony DeAndrea.
And you're gonna, and you're gonna do the Bruce Spayman thing as quickly?
No, actually, we don't
Don't need to, because they're keeping
Because you're not doing any trees at all.
Not cutting any trees at all.
Okay. There's no change in the scenic road, streetscape?
Nope, there's some weeds.
Perfecto. Okay.
Just so we, okay.
Sorry, okay. Yeah, so we no longer have a tree site distance issue.
All righty.
So will it be encouraging words in the proceed-to-final about the variance?
We think it's a good, we think it's a good idea for you to go.
Only for use variances. Should there be a report?
No, I know, but when you proceed to, I always ask you, when it's a final, we hold it open, and you haven't made a decision, so you obviously don't want to comment on anything, because you haven't decided, but just to move to final by, whatever you can say.
We are approving of your move to ARC, or to the zoning board of appeals to go to a single entranceway.
You need to get, you need to act on the preliminary first, though, before they can go to ZBA per the regulations, so
Well, I don't know, but he's leaving it open, has to leave it open.
Right.
Right, but he's not going to ZBA until July anyway, so we'll see, see you in the next meetings.
Yeah, we'll see you.
We'll see you when we see you.
It's only the use variance that we get to say something.
Hang on, sorry, any other comments from the Commission? Any comments from the public? Somebody's moving? Or you're just getting ready for the next one?
That one will be late again.
A little excited.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll go
We'll leave it open.
And you have our revised plans for us? Mr. Higgin?
Oh, sorry. Am we doing anything tonight? Is that anything?
We will.
Yes.
Item number six, Pathways Community Center.
This is the revision?
Matt, why don't you hand out a copy?
All right, this is, oh, it looks like Pet Pantry.
Not quite sure how to take that.
No, no, I mean, it has a similar style. I didn't, I didn't mean that as a judgment of any kind. I meant it has a similar style to the new Pet Pantry building. Is it the same architect?
Did you do that building as well, Matt?
Doesn't it have a similar kind of feel to it?
No.
No? Okay. All right, I'm the only one who thinks that, anyway.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Higgin for the record, on behalf of Pathways. This is the Pathways Community Day Program on the west side of Sineaway Road. There is currently a single-story building where they operate the program from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And they have a variety of educational programs for art, music, computer, and also provide lunch for the participants. There are up to 40 participants, and it will stay with the same hours of operation and max, same maximum number of participants. We did appear in front of the zoning board of appeals. We needed a front yard variance, even though we're staying in the same footprint as the existing building, and we need an FAR variance because the change that you made to the regulations last August was almost right where we needed it, but not quite for the attic space, so
Apologize for that.
It was, it was two and a half of the three issues that we needed to address. But the Board of Appeals found that there was basis for granting the FAR variance, as well as the front yard variance, and approved it. They also granted the special exception, since that's currently where special exceptions are dealt with under the regulations, and to allow for this community and educational center to exist in the R7 zone. We also appeared in front of the Architecture Review Committee, which is also a provider of approval. The plans that you have make what I would say are some fairly slight changes to the facade, but that the ARC thought were very important for the overall look of the building. They also had wanted some significant changes to the landscape plan, based on the comments from the landscape architects on ARC, and those have been made as well. One of the things we dealt with at the ARC was the protection of the stone wall around the cemetery.
Does this represent the latest landscaping plan?
Yes.
This was the one reviewed by ARC?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the change that they were looking for us to do was to provide for bollards and wheel stops in front of the
Well, you're looking for the
I was just looking for the landscape plan, because they wanted to make sure that that stone wall, which has been hit recently, is protected. We told them that we would provide the protection with bollards and wheel stops, and that we would also have the stone wall repaired.
It came up in the lighting plan, not necessarily the landscape plan, but you have indicated that you want a ground-mounted tree light in the southeast corner, southwest?
That was one of the things that they said. You can't have that, yes. So this does not reflect all of the changes that the ARC asked for last week. It reflects the plan that they looked at at last week's meeting. We also have a few bollards for path lighting. It's probably gonna be the rare occasion where that's needed, since the program runs
You close them up at 4:00 in the afternoon.
But there are staff members that stay later, and that's really just for safety, rather than for anything else.
Well, would they be turned off at, what time would they be turned off?
Uh
10 o'clock?
Well, I was thinking more like 7:00, but yes.
Fine. Sounds good. Summertime, and they won't even be on.
That's, that's true. And for the most part, the program runs till 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, so the utility of them is gonna be limited.
Are you in agreement, then, since these plans that we're looking at tonight don't incorporate all of the changes requested by ARC, but you're not, are you in agreement with all with all of the changes they've requested?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and there was also, uh, a question about the, uh, picket fence, uh, that's shown on the plan, and that will be a solid board fence.
Okay.
I think that addresses the issues that came up in the staff report in at your briefing yesterday, and we would ask for your approval.
Any comments from the commission?
Where, where are they going to reside during construction?
After the demolition.
Yeah, well, it's hard to live there.
Uh, this, this is Flo Griffin, who's the Executive Director of Pathways.
We, we don't know yet. We're hoping maybe the Y W C A, um, who we have a good relationship with, and I have to talk to Bob D'Angelo.
Okay.
Oh.
But it, it won't be there once the building is torn down.
Some of the neighbors have, have a concern, uh, about the, um, traffic, the vans, they claim, that they say that some of the vans that are there now are overhang and, and stick out into Taylor Lane. Can you address that? Were, are there any vans stored on this site during the day, or are they going somewhere else somewhere?
Yes, but it's clearly in our, we have one van, and there, it's clearly in our driveway. It's, it's up against, we have a basketball hoop, and it's way, way inside the driveway.
Is it, does it fit into a normal parking space?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Could one of you just show me where the van is, is scheduled to be parked on the site? If it, if it is scheduled? Well, that's the handicap spot. Is that-
Most of the participants in the program come by van.
Right, they cut, I know.
On some walk, but it's primarily by van.
I was just trying to, I was just making sure there is a spot for this van to be parked on the property and so forth.
Uh, there is, this is the same program they've been running-
Right.
-in the place for eight years, so, uh, if, if there is an issue regarding the placement of van or other vehicles that might be on site, uh, Ms. Griffin can deal with that as it arises, but we-
I've never, never heard of it.
All right, well, perhaps if there are any neighbors here tonight, maybe we'll hear from them.
Everybody, your clients are all coming on the van. Okay, so, I have a question on the Z B A, um, conditions. They, you currently have forty, thirty participants is the, is the number you give, and they limited you to forty, but if not everybody is taking the van, and you increase the number of your participants from thirty to forty, you would in fact become more non-conforming for parking. You've got an existing non-conformity for parking, which you're keeping, and that's fine, but if you were to increase from thirty to forty, you would become more non-conforming.
Uh, I, I think what we, uh-
So, I'd like-
Provided at the Board of Appeals was to say that there are currently about thirty people participating in the program, but there have been as many as forty, and the state would fund up to forty.
Okay, so you're not-
So, it's not that there's a change in how the program has been run for the last eight years.
Forty has been part of this, this parking that you have?
Correct. We're, we're not proposing to add anything additional.
The five spaces, okay. I just wanted to double-check that, because I didn't wanna be creating, I didn't know if they had focused on that, that they would be giving us a non, a greater non-conformity?
No. So, this was that, there have been as many as forty participating, that's the maximum, and they said, do you anticipate getting more people involved than the forty? And, uh, we indicated no, because primarily state funding and, and the space itself. It's crowded now, but it would be more crowded, even in the new facility with more than forty people.
Conservation gave us a couple of comments on the planting and so forth. Do you have any problem with that, working that out before the zoning permit?
Uh, haven't seen their comments, Mr. Chairman. Um, but we, we can-
We're withholding them until tonight to spring them on you.
Uh, that seems to be the case with those conservation comments.
They were noted June seventh.
Uh, they didn't come through as part of the staff report, as I recall, but, uh, that, they are something we can work out as part of building permit.
Fine.
Whatever they are. But we had a very extensive discussion, actually, with the landscape architects. It was a very extensive, uh, discussion with the landscape architects on A R C regarding the particular and appropriate plant material. Uh, they asked about a couple of trees in the back that we're proposing to remove. Uh, we provided them with that information and the history on those, and had an arborist look at them, uh, and things like, uh, having a lawn in front rather than some plant material that would be growing in over time and may not be quite as, uh, as attractive. I, I'm sure we can work this out between now and building permit.
Are there any comments from the public?
Thank you.
Any problem with closing it? Then we'll close this? Can I have a motion, please?
You may. I hereby move approval, um, for this application for final postal site plan. In so doing, uh, the commission notes that, uh, D P W has issued drainage exemptions. The Zoning Board of Appeals has granted a special exception, as well as front yard setback and F A R variances, with conditions as to hours and participants. Uh, this was dated, uh, this was at their meeting on the twenty-third of May. There are to be no more than forty participants, and the hours shall be Monday through Friday from nine to two. Uh, the existing non-conformity, uh, for the, as to parking shall continue with this proposal. The applicant has, agrees with all the comments made by the A R C at their meetings on, uh, May second and June sixth, and will integrate them into their plan. These include the uplighting originally proposed will be eliminated. They will build a six-foot fence to, uh, between them and the adjoining property to the west, I believe that is. Uh, they will repair the stone wall for the cemetery and will, uh, protect it during construction, and they will incorporate the comments that Conservation has made regarding landscaping.
Well, I think not only protect the stone wall in construction, but also afterwards with bollards.
Yep. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we're going to open the public hearing now. First up in the public hearing, the Town of Greenwich, Planning and Zoning Staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, we have thirty-two pages of amendments, so to spare everyone the torture of reading all of that tonight, I'm gonna ask the court reporter if I could just send you the document, and you can incorporate it into the transcript. But what I would like to do is just spend a few minutes explaining it, um, in a bit more detail. So, there's, there's three parts to this proposal, really. The, the first part deals with a process and efficiency issue, and the building zone regulations currently specify when a particular use is subject to a special permit application, subject to the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and approval, or a special exception, which is subject to review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, this proposal is to amend all applicable sections of the building zone regulations, such that all special exception uses will now be reclassified as special permit uses, with the exception of accessory uses in residential zones that are over a certain size, and that's, um, referenced in Section six dash ninety-five A two A, and those would still be handled by the Zoning Board of Appeals unless they are part of a special exception, special permit application that it's already, um, reviewed by this commission under Section six dash one oh one, and then the special permit would be the only application that's needed. Of course, those are for the homes that are over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet in volume. So, the sections that this, um, affects are Section six dash fifteen, six dash seventeen, six dash nineteen, six dash twenty, six dash ninety-four, six dash ninety-five, six dash a hundred, six dash one oh one, six dash one oh six, and six dash one oh eight. The benefit-
Excuse me, six one oh nine?
No, that, uh, oh, the one oh nine has to do with a different issue. That's the second part of the amendment.
Sorry, okay.
So, that, these are just the sections that impact, um, the special exception, special permit. And the reason that we're doing that change is that the outside resources that are available to the Planning and Zoning Commission would now be applied to the questions of use, um, that are now subject to the special exception review, and what I'm referring to are analytical reports that are prepared by the Planning and Zoning Staff, specific comments from town departments, reports from the commission's traffic consultant, outside consultant where applicable, and the public briefing meetings that we hold on the Monday prior to these public hearings. Um, this would also affect, have the effect of significantly reducing the time it takes applicants to go through the regulatory process from approximately nine months to approximately four months. So, I just wanna give a quick explanation as to what the word special permit and special exception means, just to give a little bit more background. Um, just generally speaking, zoning arranges areas of a town into zones that are uniform in nature, such as residential zone, an industrial zone, commercial zone, and special permits and special exceptions are terms that are actually synonymous under the law, and they're used interchangeably. They refer to uses that are generally compatible with the zoning district, but they require special attention as to location and method of operation in order to keep it, it consistent with the uses permitted as of right in that zone. There's a separate set of standards in the zoning regulations that have to be met for special permits versus, versus special exceptions. So, Section six dash seventeen is the section that includes the standards for special permits, and six dash twenty is the section that deals with the standards for special, special exceptions. Uh, a meeting was held with the chairman of these respective boards, meaning the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, in the spring of two thousand and seventeen to discuss process and procedures, and if the standards should be changed from, from their, and both groups determined that we should take a, a comprehensive look and do an overhaul of the regulations to achieve the benefits that I noted earlier. So, that's what this proposal is for. So, it's been in the making for a while, and it's been in coordination with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Part of, um, a review of the respective standards also led to the elimination of the first standard in each of those sections, that special permits and special exceptions should be in conformance with the town plan of conservation and development. This seems to have caused a little bit of confusion, based on some of the emails that, that we've received that are part of the record, so I do just wanna spend a moment to explain, explain why we are eliminating that section of the regulation. Greenwich has a combined planning and zoning board, as the name implies, and the authority to plan comes from the town charter, and the authority to impose zoning regulations comes from the state legislature, who delegated all Connecticut towns that right through the Connecticut general statutes. So, put simply, the commission must write a comprehensive plan, that's what we call a plan of conservation and development, that complies with the requirements that are stated in the town charter, and must have zoning regulations that comply with the state statutes. So, the plan answers the questions, what do we as a community want, and the zoning regulations enforce that vision. The plan is a guiding document, the regulations are a regulatory document. The commission, when creating regulations, must ensure that they comply with the town vision as noted in the plan. The plan is also used as the basis to make municipal improvement decisions, which is outlined in the town charter. To have a standard in the zoning regulations that states an application must comply with the plan is therefore redundant, because the regulation itself can only exist by being in compliance with the plan. I hope that clarifies things. So, we're not getting rid of the plan of conservation and development or any of that vision. So, moving on to the second part of this proposal is a, uh, amendment to Section six dash one oh nine D five. This deals with the historic overlay section of our zoning regulations, and specifically an incentive therein that would allow the commission, under special permit, to permit a limited increase of floor area ratio for what are currently special exception uses, but now would be proposed as special permit uses in residential zones, and for those properties that opt to rezone to historic overlay to protect the historic asset. So, in other words, the incentive is currently there, or would be proposed to be there, for properties that want to, um, de-strict their property in perpetuity. They would be granted, um, the right to request an increase in F A R. And I'm gonna get to the, the change in just a minute, Mr. Maitland, don't be worried. There's a small change to that section, but I'll get to that at the end. Um, the regulations currently allow up to a twenty-five percent increase in F A R in the RA four and RA two zones, and a fifteen percent increase in the RA one through RA seven zones for residential uses. This proposal would result in allowing the same incentive for special exception, potentially soon to be special permit uses. The third proposed amendment is to Section six dash one oh five, two oh five, Note seven, and that would allow nonprofit educational institutions the ability to request, through a special permit application, an increase in the allowable floor area, close to thirty percent over what is permitted in the underlying residential zone. More specifically, up to a one, point one seven five F A R in the RA one zone, currently point one three five is permitted, up to a point three F A R in the R twenty zone, currently point two two five is permitted, up to a point four F A R in the R twelve zone, where point three one five is permitted, up to a point four six F A R in the R seven zone, currently point three six is permitted, and up to a point six five in the R six zone, where currently point five five is permitted. F A R for residential uses was not introduced in the RA four and the RA two zones until, um, two thousand and five, that was the effective date. However, there has been an F A R for educational uses in both of those zones since nineteen ninety-two. As a matter of interest, the permitted F A R of point zero seven five permitted in the RA four zone for educational institutions is approximately twenty percent over that of the underlying zone. The permitted F A R of point one, one five permitted in the RA two zones is approximately sixty-six percent over that of the underlying zone. Um, just wanna note a couple of changes. The, um, the Section six dash one oh nine D five, that was the second amendment that I was referring to, um, currently reads, "Height and floor area ratio shall be the same as for the pre-existing residential zone." The proposal, as written, is to eliminate that entire sentence. I'd like to amend that to simply delete the words "and" floor area ratio. So, in other words, the sentence would read, "Height shall be the same as for the pre-existing residential zone." So, that means that height has to be what the underlying, um, residential zone permits, and floor area could go up, as I described earlier. Um, also, I would like to, um, request that we keep open Section six dash ninety-five A and six dash one oh one A. Uh, the reason being that six dash one oh one was inadvertently left out of the legal notice, so I'd like to have an opportunity to notice that directly. It's just a few, it's, it's just a reference made under six dash one oh one to six dash ninety-five A two A, which is a section that deals with accessory uses over a certain size. That's the area that, that the Zoning Board of Appeals would retain jurisdiction under special exceptions for. Um, the other reason is that we, um, we need to keep Section six dash ninety-five A seven, it's currently proposed for deletion. Um, that, that's the section that allows the keeping of not more than six horses, assuming that you have at least twenty thousand square feet of gross floor area for each horse. That's currently a permitted accessory use. The change that we proposed in the regulation- The change that we proposed in the regulation is in Section 6-94, and the change is to authorize the Planning and Zoning Commission, as opposed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to allow a lesser area for each horse. So there'd be no conflict with moving forward with the 6-95, but I think it's important to keep, excuse me, with 6-94, but it's important to keep the language in 6-95 that would allow the keeping of horses when you have over that amount of land. And lastly, we need to change the notice for 6-95A8, which currently reads, "Indoor athletic uses occupy more than 1,200 square feet of floor area when authorized by the Board of Appeals as special exceptions." That's proposed for deletion. And I'd like to keep that sentence in there, except change the last part where the commission would have jurisdiction as a special permit, as opposed to the Board of Appeals. That's the proposal.
Comments from the commission? Comments from the public?
I am a citizen. Nothing more.
Your name, please?
Diana Delano. And I'm just questioning why we need to do this in the first place? Why are we changing the language? I mean, what's the problem with what we have now? There's, it's a system of checks and balances that the town charter has put in place, and it protects not only the town, but it protects the citizens. And it seems to me that, to a large degree, you're removing the appeals process. And I don't know why we need to streamline and quicken up the process. You know, it says, you know, moving something from nine to four months. That is in essence, you know, removing a large window of opportunity for people to discuss and challenge or appeal the process.
We're not removing, we're not removing the appeals process at all.
Well, you're changing the language so that some of the things cannot be appealed, some of the-
I don't think that's true.
No. What it is, is that the Board of Appeals will no longer issue a special permit, which is-
Exception.
-which they call right now special exception, but under the Connecticut law, there is no difference between that and a special permit. So they do some of the special permits, and we do some of them. And the problem is that we get a ton more information, and we're familiar, we have a, we have a much bigger staff. So when it's for issuing a special permit, it is much more effective for us to do it, because we can delve deeper into the question, and they are in agreement with that. Whereas the appeals process, we can't touch by law. That is-
But doesn't that protect the citizens, just for that reason?
What there is, ma'am, there's an overlapping-
Do you think we're doing a great protection?
There's an overlapping in these two things, many things that go for special exception, then we have to return to us for a special permit.
Is that a bad thing, though?
I'm sorry?
Is that a bad thing?
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't, but isn't it more of the-
Well, number one, it slows down the process.
But isn't that a good thing?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, because it delays, if you wanted to do something to your home or something like that, you'd be delaying, you're delaying it by five, six months, because you've got to go to separate boards.
But there are other, but other people want to voice their opinions, or challenge, or, I mean, and it doesn't, it shuts the window. I mean, I don't understand the whole, why-
Most of the state does what we're going to start doing, just to make you a little more comfortable. And the Board of Appeals, when they come to a meeting, they don't have, they don't, we get a package on every single application on Friday afternoon, and we spend the whole weekend studying. They show up on a Wednesday, and they have to grasp it and figure it out. And so it's hard, because, for example, a car dealership is very, they have to issue an exception, a permit for that, and that's a very difficult thing, that's very challenging. So we actually think we're going to do better for the community with more depth by doing this. The process will be more efficient, but we're not doing this so that people don't get a chance to voice concerns.
Well, how about people getting a chance to just discuss this before you vote on it?
Absolutely, that's what you're doing here.
Right. But I don't, are people really aware this is, have you put this out in the public? But, I mean, I know that you did it to the schools and to a lot of the institutions, but is the public, are the citizens really aware this is happening? Have there been any public forums to discuss it, or has it been put out in the papers that this is?
Well, it's-
I mean, I know it's on the town site.
The legal ad, yes.
Yeah. But have, has there been a lot of information?
Well, you're here.
Right. Because I happen to follow, you know, the town site, but, but I'm, there's not a lot of me here, so.
Well, we'll see how many people are here.
So in other words, is this something that you're going to vote on tonight, or can you maybe leave this, move it forward so that there's an opportunity to try to put it out there?
We're going to see how it goes, and see what kind of comments we get, and whether there's interest in considering-
Well, I'd like to request that perhaps you delay your decision and give people an opportunity to become more aware and understand it a little bit more, and, and kind of, because it's, our town charter is, I mean, my opinion is, why fix something that frankly isn't broken? I mean, perhaps you, and, I mean, I'm not administrator, but I'm, I think that there's a system of checks and balances in place for a reason. And it seems to have worked, and I, anyway. So that would be my request as a citizen, that perhaps there just is a little more time to evaluate it and discuss it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, when did you hear about it?
When? Four days ago.
And you found out because of, I'm sorry, how did you find out?
Just talk and people that I know, and I went on the site, and, you know, there's this letter, and then it, you know, PDF buried in the letter from Peter Tessie, and, you know, I actually read all the, I read the whole, all the changes that you want to make. And I think there are quite a few. Sorry, I'm not used to a microphone. Anyway, I just not, I actually did ask, a lot of people have no idea, as far as I know, that this is transpiring. So I just would like to request that maybe it be put out there for people to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Mike Warner.
Good evening. I'm Mike Warner. I live in Lafayette Court. And I didn't come here to comment on this matter, but I feel compelled to do so. To the extent this eliminates duplication, who could argue with that? The reason I follow what happens here is because I'm concerned about the impact auto dealerships have on our town. And I came here for that reason. But if, so I have a comment and a question. The comment is, for those that are interested, there's plenty of outlets to see what's going on here at the P&amp;Z. Two, if this eliminates duplication, who can argue with that? My question is, you have made exceptions for historical properties and for philanthropic organizations and others. Are there any requirements that are, that are no longer required? For example, setback requirements, or anything in the black letter law that's required of any applicant that you're going to eliminate? Is there anything like that being eliminated?
No.
Although the FAR could be larger for-
The setbacks stay the same?
The setbacks stay the same, the height of buildings, number of stories, that's not being modified.
Okay. So you'll get information quicker, you'll publish the information quicker, we'll have an opportunity to comment on it.
Well, as you say, duplication. And you said you're here for something later this evening.
Correct.
Well, here's the issue of duplication. You went to a meeting for a special exception-
For that same-
For the automotive dealership, is that the one you're here for?
That's, that's true.
And you're going to be here tonight, coming here for the special permit for the same thing?
Yes. The only, the only administrative complaint I have is, I like to watch what's going on here in real time, but you guys don't, it's not televised.
No, no, it's broken. 10-079 is broken. It's not our fault. We weren't-
I'm blaming you.
Mike, here's a question for you. So-
Need to get files.
An automotive will no longer go both to ZBA and us, it would only be here. That's what would happen. And so that, all the issues that come up with an automotive, ZBA doesn't have the ability to get all that staff information to them.
Right, right.
I mean, we have, how many people do we have? We have seven people to support our research.
Plus, we have traffic consultants and so forth.
So that was, the reason ZBA was okay with this was because you want to do a thorough job for the town, and we have a staff to do it. Now, do you feel like, when you've looked at how we've done automotive decisions, do you feel like we dug deep?
Well, when you rule in my favor, I do feel that way.
At least you're honest and spoken like a politician, I'm afraid.
But I wanted to say that if no regulations are being, no requirements are being avoided, that's what concerns me. And, and also that you're not going to save on resources. That is, when you have a traffic study, you're not going to, not use your traffic study consultants. Hopefully, you will use all the-
Contrary.
You'll use all the tools you have.
So that's, on the contrary, because-
Well, that's what we can do under special permit. Special exception does not have, the Zoning Board of Appeals doesn't have the opportunity to get that information.
Or the budget.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I didn't come here to comment on this, but I heard it, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? I'll get to you in a second.
The standing up person gets to go first, I guess.
My name's Burke Dempsey. I live on Hillside Road. I too got this a few days ago, trying to digest it. I think it does need some demystification. It needs a full disclosure and about the real intentions of what this really represents, because there's a couple of things tied together. So that makes it complicated for people to read. I do believe that regular review of standards is a good practice. I do believe that streamlining can be helpful. However, I think the guiding principles have to remain constant. Sometimes, though, changes create consequences, and those consequences are either intended or unintended, but they can have negative effects. So what I'm seeking here tonight, but hopefully you'll help us demystify this in the coming weeks, by some examples. So I'm just going to lay them out, and maybe you can give me some feedback. If you can't give me some feedback, then, then we'll, we'll take it up in the coming weeks. So with Greenwich High School, so Greenwich High School gets a FAR increase, because it's already at its limit and above its limit, and it has a big plan to build a lot of different things. That appears to me, if I read this, and I actually assume unintended consequences, that will allow a lot more FAR increase at Greenwich High School. Now, clearly, they talk about schools as the biggest budget item by far of any of the other schools. I do agree the schools need improvement, but, you know, this would then allow a building of a bubble, a field house, a rink, other things like that. If that's true, you should be telling us that right now. If that's the intention of what's going on here, then we need to know it, as residents, as townspeople, because this seems to open up that, that door for that. If I'm wrong, that'd be great. I'd love to be able to go home tonight and know that's not the case. We also have a 2003 settlement that basically says, no matter what the standards are going forward, for all time, cannot be changed. So if the town wants to sue itself, it can do that, because it's settled with itself, with the zoning, and have, we've all read all the documents. So if that's the case, and that can't be done, so then I don't need to worry. Then the high school's off, off the list, because it cannot be changed. You need to tell me if that's true or not true. Also, notice that some indoor athletic facilities were stricken off the record. So I don't know if that was a-
It was a mistake.
It was stricken or put back?
It was a mistake to strike it.
Yes, that's not on the-
Okay. Because that would also leads me to wonder about the bubbles. Okay, the second part, the second part is on historic overlay. Historic overlay has been studied for its impact on sewer and other demands in the city, town, whatever we want to call it, we're becoming a city. If that's, if that's true, we doubled the density. I think urbanization is a good trend. I think it's lasting. I think it's good, it's efficient. So I'm not against that, per se. But I don't know whether people have studied that, and whether we're supposed to just okay that. And suddenly, I'm told in various parts of town, we can't get sewer because it's already overtaxed. Well, I'd like sewer, but I can't have sewer, but we're going to do historic overlay, and other people are going to double down on sewer. If that's true, then other people should get sewer first that have been waiting for it, before you double down on it. How about the aesthetic risk to this? People do historic overlay, and they build a house next to an old house. I have a 1906 house. If I build a house next to my house, I would actually want to make sure that it reflected properly on the value of my house, so as not to depreciate it. I don't know if everyone else feels that way, or has the money to do so. So will that make our town sloppy as historic overlay goes, and people build sloppy things next to their historic house to make a buck? So we have to consider all that. And it's being thrown at me with four days' notice. So I think we need to know the intentions of this, full disclosure, and demystify it for us. Thanks. I don't know if you have any feedback, but that's fine.
Want to address those issues now?
Well, it's up to you. Do you want to answer individually, so?
I think it's better.
So the question about, the, the first question is, could Greenwich High School expand under this proposal? The answer is yes. They have the right to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, under the special permit, for an increase in FAR. As I said, it's the right to ask. So then they have to, the commission would scrutinize that application against the standards that are in 6-17. This was not driven by that, per se, so this is not a precursor to something that's coming up. But having said that, like you said yourself, the high school is at the max, so obviously, it would benefit from it. But it was not for a specific project necessarily. And the stipulations that are on the high school property, this would not change those at all. So things like restrictions on high school lights, this has no impact on that. However, like I said, this would give the high school the opportunity, the Board of Ed, to ask, under special permit, to add floor area. The indoor athletic facility is actually something that comes up a lot in residential zones, and it's not specific necessarily to the educational uses. It's really something that comes up in residential zones. And the idea is that that's something that's currently under the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The change is to simply put that under the commission's jurisdiction, but that really is not pertinent necessarily to the educational institutions. That was just a, again, part and parcel of this process improvement. The historic overlays and infrastructure, the, we just made a major change to the historic overlay regulations in the early part of this year. We've had regulations that offer incentives for historic overlays for some time, 20-plus years. We just made a few additional incentives. Part of, part of that process is going through a very extensive review through several boards. So it starts with first, the Historic District Commission. The standard, number one, that you have to meet is that your structure is 1940 or older. But that, in and of itself, is not enough. You have to go before the Historic District Commission to determine if you're worthy, so to speak, to come and ask then the Planning and Zoning Commission through a special permit process, which again, is an extensive process, to look at all kinds of things. And you, you kind of hit one of the big ones right on the head, which is, is this in keeping with that historic asset? Is it adding to it? It should not overpower it, it should be accessory to. So that's one of the first issues. The second issue, having to do with infrastructure, there are distribution constraints in this town, meaning getting the sewer to the plant. There's, there's not a issue, per se, with capacity at the plant, but, but the distribution to the plant is in question. Any, any application that's before this commission, and actually, just townwide in general, has to, we send everything to either the sewer department or to the health department if it's on septic. So every application, regardless if it's a special permit or not, has to go through that process with the, with the sewer department. And the proposal that's on the table this evening has to do with special exception uses specifically. So that would be one of the big questions. The, the one that has come in under that applica, that regulation recently was the Cos Cob Inn that's on River Road. That is obviously an inn in a residential zone, and they requested to convert that to a club use, squash courts, and housing. So that was all, just to give you an example, that was all part of the review of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think that was all of your points.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you, Mrs. Deluca.
I think, in the, in the blue shirt, white vest, your hand's been up several times.
Baron Snyder, D7. I'm just concerned, I, I think a lot of this, as far as I know, sounds great. But I'm concerned about paragraphs 615A1, 617D1, 620B1, the POCD, and the year that we're redoing the POCD, updating it, and the year that people are speaking out. Number one concern, from what I've seen, is- Number one concern from what I've seen is overdevelopment and maintaining character and therefore giving POCD more teeth. Even though it is apparently redundant, I think it's a bad idea to take it out. I don't see why we should now be pulling it out of zoning code. So, I would like to see leaving it, us leaving it in. And as far as the FAR increases, I'm trying to understand it. So, if a school, for example, wants to increase FAR, that school would be MI, right? It would end up being a municipal improvement?
Yes.
Well, no. It could be, if it's a private school.
Right. But if it's a public school, it would be. And so, my concern is there, they have this ability to expand so much, which is rather controversial these days. And I think there is a need. So, I think it has, revamping of a lot of these schools has to be done carefully. And that brings up the whole question of the MI process, which a lot of people are concerned about, the whole site plan thing. And Peter Berg has brought this up, and I agree with him, that I think there needs to be a couple of steps, not just the one. I understand that you need details in the site plan, so you know how to make a decision. But can we have one, two, or three steps, so that time and money isn't spent? And then, when it comes before you, and we come here, and we're thinking, geez, they've spent $500,000 in two years already, or $2 million, or whatever, how can you say no? Or how can you say, could you please change this?
Oh, we do.
We do.
I know you do. I know. But anyway, so those are...
We feel bad, but hey.
I know you do. I've seen you. But anyway, so those are my concerns. And I just...
We just did that in a big way, as you might know.
Yes, yes. But going forward, I would, so those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are talking internally about outlining that process more clearly.
Oh, okay.
But it's not part of this regulation.
And to get what we need without it being more than, and that absolutely, we get the point. People should get to go down a road, and then it's hard sometimes to reel people back in. Same thing, you know, we get it. We're human, too. So...
Yeah.
The second point you made about with the MIs, you weren't concerned, there's, what you're really saying with the MIs on the schools is there's a double, there's a safety valve, safety, there's a...
Or we should have.
But that's not before us tonight.
The schools is, but what she's saying is, if a school's going to apply for more...
The MI process is not before us tonight.
No, hold on. Let me finish this thought. If the, if the, if a school's applying for X amount of FAR, the community has another opportunity to input on that, not just here, because of the MI process. That's what I was trying to say.
Well, no, because a private school would not...
But a public school, which was what Baron was saying. So, there is that.
Right. And just have an opportunity early in the game before everyone's...
Yeah. And that, again, as Andy said, we'll do that later.
What you're talking about.
But right now, there is, the public schools have a lot of checks and balances on the system, and which hopefully work, you know, that's always the question.
Yeah. Okay.
I was going to expand on that quickly.
The POCD.
POCD comment again.
And the legal enforcement, I think you got it right, the legal enforcement of it being...
So, just to, again, reiterate that the plan of conservation and development is a guide. It's a vision. It tells the public. It tells the commission under MI what the vision for the community is. So, to have a standard that says, that a regulation that says be in compliance with the guideline, it just doesn't work, because a guideline is just that. It's a guideline. It's a vision. So, be in compliance with the vision, we've already, we've already done that. We've already, we've already told you how to do, how to be in compliance with that vision through the set of regulations. So, then to say it again adds confusion, I think, because the vision and guide can be interpreted many different ways. And it's, the decision that the commission makes in that regard has to do with planning questions, hence a municipal improvement. That's a planning function. So, to, under the zoning function, so I was trying to differentiate those two roles of the commission, under the zoning function, to give the planning and zoning commission, or require the applicants to prove that they're in compliance with this vision, is, it's just impractical. It just doesn't make sense, because the way it works is you have a vision, you enforce that vision, so to speak, through your regulation. So, to now make a circuitous type of comment that you now have to be in compliance with that vision, it just, it just doesn't work.
Okay. Well, I understand, but I don't see where the POCD then is really, I mean, where do you cite it then? Because here, all you talk about is safety, traffic, blah, 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 which makes sense. But where does the POCD come in, then? I don't...
If the POCD requests or suggests under an action item that we study, let's say, zoning in the R6 zone, that comes to us, and then we study that. And if we do change regulations or want to modify regulations, we do it, then it is in compliance with the POCD. To reverse that process is impractical, because there may be many things in the, in the POCD which will be addressed sometime in the future. But to then bring them in and try to make them compliant with a zoning regulation, which has to have a lot of specificity into it, because you can't have zoning regulations that are not specific.
Right.
It's conflicting.
And just, sorry. And just, if I could read a few of the special permit standards, just to ease your mind, just so you can see the broad discretion that the planning and zoning commission does have. Will not materially adversely affect residential uses, nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents, nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics. Preserve land, structures, or features having special historical, cultural, architectural merit. Be in scale with and compatible with surrounding uses, building, streets, and open spaces. Preserve or enhance important open space and other features of the natural environment. Not materially adversely affect adjacent areas located within the closest proximity to the use. And that's just a few of them. So, you can see, it's quite broad.
Where did that come from? I like that.
That's section 6-17D. So, those are the special permit standards that are in place today. We're not proposing to change any of those. So, we're just, in fact, adding the number of uses that will be subject to that set of standards.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Vernon Galvin. I, I'm on the RTM Land Use Committee. In fact, I'm the secretary. I found out about this last night at the RTM meeting. So, I definitely think neighbors need more time to process this. I know there was a small piece in the classified ads in the Greenwich Times, but a lot of people don't read that. The discussion so far was very useful. But for the public schools, the MI process is a check, as is the budget process. But for the private schools, it's something totally different. And we know, I am the largest, a butter of Brunswick, and I live across the street from Greenwich Academy. The neighbors have had a very contentious relationship going back to around 2010 with Greenwich Academy, when they were totally not transparent. They cut down 95 trees. There was a big uproar. A big issue was over a property at 2 Patterson Avenue, at the intersection of North Maple, Maple, and Patterson, which they succeeded, went before ZBA, and they got it off the tax rolls, because they needed the FAR for development within the campus. They then proceeded to take it off, to shut down the utilities. I mean, that was, again, around 2010. And we watched the property deteriorate. We refer to it as the ghost house. I look out my window and see the roof line going like this. And they needed the FAR. Now that they have this possibility of increasing, we have no idea of what's happening. And that's one of the things. It's very unfortunate in this wonderful town to have this whole idea of suspicion. I hear, oh, they're going to create a third lane on North Maple. They're going to do this. They're going to do that. And it definitely has impact. And given the history, going back a number of years, which was extremely contentious, we really need to alert the neighbors, have them, you know, find out what's happening. Because the private schools, it's a totally different issue. We don't have the checks and balances for them.
Just, let me just ask you. Peter Berg is on the distribution for the agendas for planning and zoning. So, does he...
No, we didn't. We haven't discussed this. I was not aware of this. In fact, we went, I did the minutes last week. And we discussed the MI process, et cetera. And we went back and revisited the Sound Beach Avenue.
You're the secretary.
I'm the secretary.
So, what we should do, I think secretaries are so useful.
I work really hard on that. I spend a day of my life every month.
So hard. And these guys don't appreciate me. But...
That's, I know.
Why do we add the secretary?
You broke your arm there. Brett poked himself in the back.
Right, exactly. But it's, it's pretty crazy.
Why don't we add the secretary for land use on the distribution? Because Peter Berg gets our agendas and our meeting stuff. Let's add you.
Peter has his own agenda at times.
So, that way, we know that the secretary has it, and then...
Absolutely.
We've got two people looking at it. I think...
I have your email ready. Do you want me to add you?
Yes.
Great.
So, we're going to add you, and you're always going to get our agenda.
But people need more time to process this. And having one small piece in the classifieds...
See, we sent it out ages ago. And if you had gotten it, because we know how useful secretaries are, you would have...
Yeah.
Okay.
Been alerted. That would be, that would be very helpful. But the private schools are different. And, you know, Town Hall, there's a big stack of letters from GA parents in support of, of this.
Right.
And we know that the school is pretty much maxed out on its FAR. So, neighbors are, you know, concerned. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Planning and zoning commission. I'm actually here to offer a slightly different perspective than my good friend Ellen, who came just before you.
Of course.
Of course. My name is Miriam Cruiser. I'm a Greenwich Academy parent of two young girls, a District 7 resident who lives on Maple Avenue, and hence a neighbor to Julian Curtis, Brunswick, and Greenwich Academy. And I'm here to voice my full support for the pending zone text amendment. As a District 7 member, I have been particularly interested in the proposal and presentation of KGND Architects hired by the Greenwich Board of Education and the town's 15-year facilities master plan for our public schools. According to their recommendation, six of our 10 elementary schools and all three of our middle schools need notable square footage expansions. In terms of Greenwich Academy, where my family is personally vested, the school will soon embark on a much-needed capital investment project focusing on our lower school. It is clear, they, too, will need to expand footprint and floor area. While some may contest, this increase of footprint is unnecessary in the worst of bigger-is-better Greenwich culture. I would counter that schools of the future are not the symmetrical boxes of hallways and rooms with tightly packed desks and built-in bookcases of our childhoods. The presentations of KGND architects have reinforced that creative space designed is critical for the schools of tomorrow, spaces to discuss, to build, to experiment, to be introspective, in addition to the desks and chairs of old. State-of-the-art workspaces have already moved this way. State-of-the-art schools will do the same. Some others will contend that we don't need more instances of private schools taking taxable property off the grand list. With all due respect to many people I do very much respect in this room, this contention, I believe, is short-sighted and complete and unnecessarily alarmist. For the thousands of private school students who reside in Greenwich, there are tax-paying parents, many of whom have some of the highest tax assessment properties in areas such as Bell Haven, Indian Harbor, or Lake Avenue, who are saving the town of Greenwich multiple tens of millions of dollars on educating their children privately. This needs to be considered versus the grand list numbers quoted by opponents, and will make those figures pale in comparison. The grand majority of parents I know will tell you that one of the main reasons they moved to Greenwich was the access to the town's public schools or wanting to be close to some of the best private schools within commuting distance to New York City. This was certainly the reason we purchased a home in Greenwich. It is also clear that whether it is a much-needed board of education, facilities master plan, the Greenwich Academy capital plan, or upcoming alterations to other Greenwich private schools, the next few years will be ones of change for these fantastic institutions. By adopting this sensible zoning amendment, which I need to emphasize, still has plenty of checks and balances, as we have already have discussed, these necessary changes would take less time and be more streamlined, important to schools and their, and their calendar year and planning. A positive for both our public and private schools, as well as more efficient for our planning and zoning department. In our nearly eight years in Greenwich, Greenwich Academy, Julian Curtis, and the Brunswick School have been excellent neighbors. The town of Greenwich should afford them the ability to become state-of-the-art spaces for the students of tomorrow, which quite frankly, will make them even better neighbors as they woo new families into our town. And ultimately, this is what will support our town and the Greenwich grand list. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Leslie Tarkington and a longtime resident. As a supporter of Greenwich schools, I come from attending the PTAC, Greenwich Parent Teachers Association Council Annual Dinner. This proposed text amendment has had no informational notice to the public, other than the legal notice in the very back of the Greenwich Times, which I'm not sure people read much longer. No public hearings, and as of last Friday morning, there was no analysis in the file. There were, however, letters from parents of students at one of the town's private schools. The proposed simplification of the regulations is alarming, and obviously proposed by those who do not live in neighborhoods occupied by a special exception 501(c)(3) entity or public school. I guess I should add special exception or special permit, 501(c)(3) entity or public school. This proposed text amendment ignores the importance of the town's neighborhoods and the delicate balance between the integrity of the quality of life and values that the neighborhoods provide for the town's grand list, and the shared responsibility that both the public and private schools that populate our neighborhoods have to their surrounding residents. I do not support the proposed process and efficiency issues to eliminate review and approval by the zoning board of appeals and their related special exception. These are the additional quality eyes and perspective on our neighborhoods. Their special exception process may cause some slowing, but it can also relate to slowing the deterioration of the town's quality of life. Rarely do they cause duplication. The script says that planning and zoning asks for traffic studies, et cetera. But currently, this seems to center around the applicant and not the neighborhood. P&amp;Z is no longer evaluating neighborhood history nor previous decision letters by its own predecessor boards. From a neighborhood perspective, the ZBA and special exception process is invaluable. One of the issues that planning and zoning states that they have is the briefing meetings prior to the public meetings. I am surprised, under the Freedom of Information Act, that these meetings continue to be permitted. There is a loss of transparency in the application for development for the residents with this proposed accelerated timeline. FAR has value. That is how land trades in town. Currently, already, the 501(c)(3)'s and developers have an advantage when a property comes to market. In the case of private schools, it is a pre-tax capital contribution. When you and I buy a residence, the money we use for the equity is after-tax dollars. When FAR was added to the backcountry 2 and 4 acre zones in 2005, the zones RA1 and lower were denied 15% of their FAR, both for residential and special permit and special exceptions, and the FAR was accordingly reduced. With this proposed text amendment, the planning and zoning commission proposes to return the 15% FAR to the public and private schools, but not to the residential properties, and permits the private schools, which do not pay property taxes, to request up to 30% additional FAR. This is highly discriminatory. Planning and zoning is creating a new zone townwide for 501(c)(3) schools and/or educational institutions. The proposal may promulgate spot zoning and therefore be illegal. Connecticut General Statute, Section 8.2, states, "All such regulations shall be uniform for each class or kind of buildings, structures, or use of land..." or kind of buildings, structures, or use of land throughout each district. But the regulations in one district may differ from those in another district and may provide that certain classes or kinds of buildings, structures, or uses of land are permitted only after obtaining a special permit or special exception." The town has precedent for denying advantaged FAR for classes of use within the FAR zones. Planning and zoning must do additional legal and financial analysis. The proposed language for educational institutions FAR is dangerous as museums, private museums owned by residents in town, hospital training facilities, and any other organization that wants a 30% bonus in FAR will form a nonprofit educational unit. Neighborhoods should be gravely concerned that for both the zoning board of appeals and the planning and zoning commission, that the plan of conservation development is no longer a standard for the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Why should planning and zoning prepare it and the town residents pay for it if it won't be used for guidance and compliance purposes? What kind of parameters will this commission use for its decisions? This, again, speaks of lack of transparency. Overall, the proposed text amendment will increase the burden of costs to our neighborhoods where these private schools and public schools are located and for the cost of traffic, water quality, sewage, and other townwide roads and infrastructure, and likely private school busing on our residential taxpayers throughout town. Unlike other nice communities, Greenwich to date has no ordinances to charge private schools some pilot payment in lieu of taxes. Who will pay the cost of this development? Town neighborhoods struggle to retain our quality of life. This text amendment proposal is a detriment to our neighborhoods. I'm opposed to it as it is presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we've addressed some of the points. The POCD, it's, again, it's a cycle. And the way we see it, you write the POCD, it dictates the regulations, and then, when an application comes in, it has to fit those regulations. People don't like the applications that we're approving. Then the next time we update the POCD, we get a new vision and it dictates what happens to the regulations. And I see that as an ongoing circle. I, I really don't feel that lack of transparency is an issue with this commission. I really don't. I think this is the most straightforward group of people I've ever worked with, and they work their tails off.
Well, you know, again, I've served on a POCD committee, and I know what we wrote and what included. And I know that a lot of that, or most of it, if not all of it, has not been updated since that. And that was the old POCD. So I think that what you're talking about is very idealistic. But I think that the reality of those of us who have spent years and years and so many applications trying to defend our neighborhoods are very familiar with the process. And, you know, we need help. And, and, and the help here appears to be going to a group that, you know, clearly perhaps is lacking strategy at this point in time. And, you know, our neighborhoods are really what makes Greenwich so very, very special. And they are changing phenomenally rapidly. And many people who live on dead-end streets or, you know, sort of closed neighborhoods perhaps aren't feeling these pressures. But those of us who live, you know, closer to town, I mean, you notice that there are several people here from District Seven. I live in District Seven. Across the street is District Eleven, and next door is District Eleven. But this is an area, when you look across the town and these private and public schools, these are the ones where we're going to see the most pressure from your regulations. You start on the western side, and you have Eagle Hill, you've got wherever, Fairfield, Westchester County, whatever they call it today. You have Brunswick, you have the academy, you have Country Day, you've got Greenwich High School, et cetera. We have the traffic flows. I mean, we all plan. I plan my life to make sure that I'm not going to town or returning from town when there are half-hour periods when you just can't get through that traffic backlog. I mean, what's happened on, on North Street, since even the change of the, of the late, you know, school starts at Greenwich High School, is the people coming in from back North Street, they come through and cut through the cemetery and, and they're on North Street, and then they come back into Parsonage Road and then cut through our neighborhood roads to avoid that, that backlog, you know, at Fairfield and the lights and so forth, and, you know, at, at North Street. So, you know, in thinking of this, I think that one of the reasons you hear a lot from these District Seven people is because the pressures that are going to be exerted on this part of town. I also think that the publicity hasn't been good. And, you know, I can, you know, my other life, obviously, is, I heard a lot from neighbors of Central, neighbors of Eastern Middle School and so forth. I don't see any of those neighbors here in this meeting tonight. And yet, I expect that if they knew that these changes were going to be made, that you would be hearing from them also, and maybe from other parts of town. So at minimum, I would ask that you keep this open and, 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 you know, do a Greenwich Times story or give it more publicity. Because I think before something like this happens, this is going to have a major impact on our land values. And, you know, while my predecessor said that, maybe not. You don't, it's a very complex and very delicate balance. And when you engra, basically are giving a land value benefit. Remember, FAR is, is how we value our process, our, our properties, to one particular group and denying it to another. Remember, in 2005, we all were equal. And this time, this is a, this is a major change. So anyway, lots of things to think about, and I thank you so much for all your time and for everything that you do to volunteer. And I know it takes a tremendous amount of work, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Each one of you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Whoops. Hello. My name is Wynne McDaniel, and I am a resident of District Seven and the chair of the District Seven RTM. And I'm concerned about these exceptions vis-à-vis the schools. I live near many private schools, and while I don't mind living near them, and my child is actually a student at one of them, the main reason I purchased my home was to be in a residential neighborhood close to town. Over the years, I have seen the schools renovate, expand, et cetera. But enough is enough. How big do they need to get? Let's keep the character of our neighborhoods. Please do not approve this amendment, this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think my voice will carry, but, um...
No, you got to use the microphone and tell us who you are.
I'm Suzanne Samas Cabot. I'm a fourth-generation resident of Greenwich. I currently live over by the Stanford School, soon to be Greenwich Country Day. I think it is fantastic opportunity for Country Day. I have witnessed throughout my life and experienced the ebb and flow and the changes of all the schools in this town. I went to Parkway School. Parkway closed for a while. Was going to become an elderly facility. Now it's back to being a school. We've all adjusted to some changes. But I think what attracts people to Greenwich and what will continue to support our tax base are the residents. And one of the reasons why families come here is for the incredible education, whether it is our great public education or our private schools. And I think we need to continue to allow our schools the ability to change and offer the best education that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have copies for everybody, and I'm not going to go through this, but I have a, I have written comments.
Just give it to, thank you.
That's what you get from having a person home sick with the flu for a few days. I'm here tonight, my name is Karen Fassoliotis. I am currently on the Board, Board of Estment and Taxation, but my comments here tonight are as a private individual. So it's not as a representative, an elected representative. I'm, I'm here tonight again to voice my concerns about the changes of the tax amendments that you have before you tonight. I've submitted many of those concerns in my five-page memo, sorry. But I'm just going to speak on two of them. And again, I've been listening to your comments as to why you're eliminating the POCD from the text amendment. But I'm urging you to keep it there, primarily because when I see neighbors coming in to object to things that are before you, I always see them referencing the POCD. And I think that it provides valuable guidance to both you to remember that the POCD is a living and breathing document, and it also allows the people that come in to comment to make sure that they understand that the POCD is the document that they should be following. I understand that it is in, in the, in the current statutes that it is required to be considered by you when you make the regulations. But again, having it there transparent for people to see, I think, is an important thing. Second, I am still curious as to why the commission has decided to allow the increase, the close to 30% increase in the FAR for the educational institutions that are not-for-profit. I've lived in Greenwich for over 50 years. I've seen the areas change. I grew up across the street from a place that had 40 acres that now has developed. I've seen many, many changes in our town. The one thing that I have seen with respect to the private institutions of which I've lived near all my life is that, again, they've been gobbling up and expanding and buying properties that are contiguous to their surrounding campuses. And as they expand, they've been increasing traffic. They've been increasing, you know, their, their footprint to the point where I have to schedule taking my dogs out in the morning to be able to walk them safely because of the, the zooming cars that come past my, my house. I think that increasing the FAR is not the way to go. I understand that we all want quality education, you know, for our students and for our residents. But again, I think that enough is enough, as one of the speakers said. And we need to think about this carefully and plan this better. I also support recommending that you keep this open for more comment. Again, I only found out about this a few days ago myself, and I was lucky because I got to stay home nursing a cold. So I got to look, looked up a lot of things that I normally wouldn't have had the time to do. But I know that a lot of people that would have been here or could have been here did not know about this. And I think it would benefit having this further, you know, having this conversation further. So I thank you for your time. I know that what I've said may have been redundant, what I've written may have been redundant to a lot of what's been saying here, said here tonight.
Point is, you're still good.
But, and I thank you also. I know how much work is involved in volunteering, especially for the P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Andrea Savatzana. I'm Chief Financial Officer of Greenwich Academy. And I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, the economic benefit that schools do bring to Greenwich. As has been said, many individuals move to the town for the quality of the schools. Another point that has been brought up is the loss of property tax revenue as we do not pay property taxes for the portion of our property that has an educational use. But I would like to argue that, you know, two-thirds of our students are Greenwich residents. And the cost to educate a student from, from the public school system in Greenwich, which I have here from the Connecticut School Finance Organization, which I can provide to you, is approximately $20,000. That equates to $11 million that would need to be funded from the public education system if these parents decided to, to send their kids to public schools rather than private schools. In addition, all of our families, we have over 425 families who are Greenwich residents, are paying property taxes. That has got to be well over $10, $10 million in property taxes that is going to support the public schools. So the, the argument against property taxes and the values that the town is losing out due to us having a property tax exemption is not a valid one, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I think we should leave this open. Let's see what happens. Okay. We'll leave this open, take it up. Whenever, I don't know what, whether it'll be the next meeting or not.
Yeah, that's what we were just discussing. It's, it, the upcoming meetings are June 26 and July 10. And then we have two, after one, the second one in July and then one in August. So just, if you keep checking the website. If you'd like to send me an email, and I can keep you updated that way, ideally through a group representative would be ideal, so.
I'm impressed that you allow our time for the public to become more aware of this. And perhaps that's...
That's why we're leaving it open.
Oh, I would say June 26, that's a short time to be putting on the...
How much time do you think we need?
I mean, that's, that's kind of, two weeks. So I mean, I'm just saying, we need a little more time to do that.
We'll go a month. How about that? A month? Can you get everybody educated in a month? Well, we like to get public comment, that's...
And we'll have to organize it with all of the other applications we have. So we'll do what we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want a break? Okay. Let's take a, I got to say, a five-minute break, but make it 10, because nobody ever gets back in five.
Hello there.
Andy.
Nice to see you.
How are you all?
Good.
That was interesting. It really, really was. I did not expect that to down the way that it went. We didn't, did not expect... We did not expect to see the dichotomy happen the way that it is.
The thing is, is that they don't go through it every day about what has happened. Special permits, special exceptions, and everything. Again, it makes, try explaining it to clients when they're sitting in a conference room and say, well, we have to first do this and then do that, and then go back to do this and that. And they look at this room and go, why? Because we don't write the book, or we do a guide to it. And it's true, but it was very, very interesting that the way that you had both sides clapping for, you know, for everything. And you have to get, no, this is not a notice. Thing was noticing papers, not little things. Regulations we published in the.
I mean.
I think, well, I think that tomorrow, when Katie talked to you, she mentioned that, and you guys took me there, and I was really ridiculous. I don't think that you have in the processes. I was going by the drums, and where a sandwich was needed to get people to go out, come out to look at it, that's their prerogative. But you guys did a legal process that you guys handled. And I think the job is great, it's amazing, sitting here for 20 years and seeing how everybody's pushing and pulling all at the same time. You said it to me the best, it's hurting cats. It's hurting cats, is exactly what it is. And it's the truth, but it's interesting, it is. It's a different fact and change the way that they did. I did not.
It's.
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 Wanted to summarize the extensive Excel spreadsheets that I did calculate in our application where we actually go over the calculations for volume and area square footage for this house over these three times. This is actually a condensed version and they have all been in the file. I'm only adding this simple instructional presentation material tonight. Separately, we have notified the association and provided all our association neighbors with access to the documents. We have actually had two people come in and look at the documents. Our civil engineer happens to be here tonight, Jim, who has worked with me since 2016 on this. He has also worked on our previous applications, so he will ask. And so we were expectantly asked you to approve this request to allow us to renovate, maintain the screen porch properly, and to add the greenhouse to our yard. And I took these pictures today just because I know that pictures mean a lot when I'm working on the ARC board. And so when you're having discussions of FAR, my house is the outlier. It's one of those exceptions in town. I just wanted to pack, this is the screen porch area from the exterior. There will be no change. This is the area where we would put a greenhouse. I actually have a picture in the narrative for you. This I'm showing you simply because this is the pavilion we finished in 2009, which was approved by the commission at the time. And I really just wanted to highlight the roof lines of this house, simply because it's something that Jody and I, and then Patrick, have discussed at length in the calculation. So I know a lot about FAR. So, anyway, I would like to-
Your work has paid off because the zoning enforcement officer agrees with you, so.
Okay. So, but it was a learning curve and I'm like, you want me to add those closets? I'll add the closets. It's fine. So, anyway, so that's our application. But I think I am, after listening to all of the residents in the room that were here, we have spent a lot of time on this application, going through stopping, starting, regulatory changes, what's to do. And we also have spent a lot of dollars, and I personally did the application myself. So I can see the value in what you're trying to do to make this process better. And I hope that I can help you in that. One thing that I would like to just give really for Katie and Patrick, and Dawn has a copy of it. I made a timeline for myself, using all the emails I had from everybody of when I started this, who I spoke to. And I just want to share this for the file because, just like you said, we can shorten different processes. I think it's important for you to understand what people like ourselves are doing, because I think it gives you ammunition when you're hearing other people on the other side, whether it's a long time or short time. This time was too long in this situation, so, thank you.
We hear that often, too.
Thank you. But I want to support it with data.
I appreciate that.
So, I'm giving you data. Thank you.
Any comments from the commission? Comments from the public? Close this. Well, files, isn't files working? Or is it, everything's off? Well, files is not 79.
Katie, do you have that, that you can send us digitally? Just the photos?
We're not, we're gonna have a year or so.
Okay, great, because just for the, just for the record, it'd be good to have those.
No, it's the station.
Yeah.
Oh. Greenwich, is it?
Or even if you just take a photograph of the board and email it to Pat, that's fine, too. Great, thank you so much.
Item number 12, which is the AF SF 2015 Family Trust.
We're here for a special permit for a poolhouse and a pool at 88 Conyers Farms. Currently, there's an existing in-ground pool in the backyard.
And a site plan?
We're gonna be removing that. The new poolhouse is gonna be over here next to the existing tennis court, and we've sited the new pool opposite the poolhouse. And then with some, there's gonna be a septic system for the poolhouse. We found a place in the front, and then just some site landscaping and drainage.
This has all been, this plan that you're showing us tonight was the one that you showed to IWWA?
They have approved it. We have, we have a permit.
They have approved it, right.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the reason this was the plan?
This was the plan approved by Wellens.
So, the reason we're asking you that, I think, is, did you see the conservation comments?
No.
Okay. So, could you take a look?
The 7th.
Today's the 12th. So, they came in time. Read the part that I marked.
Yep.
Number two, about the encroachments. And any of you just-
It's kind of irrelevant because IWWA has approved it.
We still have to do more.
We, this was, we worked this out with Wellens. Originally, on this plan, you'll see, you'll notice on the wetland line that there's a wetland, there's wetland flags over here. And then we sent the soil scientist out here in January in his defense. And then while we're going through the wetland process, Bob Clausy questioned this area back here. And it turns out, it's a depression, it's a vernal pool. So, we sent the soil scientist back out here and they flagged some additional wetland flags. Because originally, we were gonna put the, the poolhouse here and the pool here, right opposite the tennis court in the areas that were already previously developed. So with this discovery of this new wetland line, which wasn't there in the 1980s, late 80s, early 90s, when the site was developed-
Yeah. When the subdivision was made, was like-
When the subdivision was made, you know, these wetland areas on the east and west sides are predominantly the same. We negotiated with Wellens, and we're also aware that the Conyers Farms Association also has an association rule, we gotta be 50 feet from the wetlands. So, we talked with Pat, we sat down with Pat, we sat down with Bob, and we worked this out. And they were happy with this new location for the poolhouse-
Okay.
-and the new pool.
And the pool.
And, and we're gonna be restoring this area and planting it, and they have those plans in their files that they have approved. And so the, this property is unique in that because, due to its size, and due to the large conservation easement areas, rather than a, a large detention system, we have a system to attenuate the peak, but we're utilizing the, the, the open space conservation easement area as our means for renovating the, the, the water quality. And hence why you see this 70-foot-long level spreader here. It's, it's meant to act to slowly feed the water into the wetlands, and by its fact of running across the land before it gets to the corner of the property, it renovates the water. So this method is actually less intrusive to the environment. And we also worked out with Wellens, too. This was a result of our discussions with them, because they determined in their files that this is a vernal pool as well also. Originally, we had a rain garden here, and they asked us to keep the activity out of 100 feet. So, we worked with Scott and we came up with this. And so this was a better plan overall for everybody.
Again, this has all been reviewed by Wellens.
And approved. I have the permit right here.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Thank you.
I still had to ask.
Any other comments from the commission?
Another example of the underappreciated secretary.
Wait, caught me so-
Close him, get choked up.
I know, but-
He's the product of tears.
I know. Any comments from the public? All right, then we'll close this.
Running out of public.
Thank you.
We still got Mike Warner.
Item number 13, a zoning amendment to create a P-zone in the R6 zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. Since we also have a, two site plans as part of this, I thought I would sort of combine it all and discuss the site plan issues as I get into-
We have a problem, because part of it's in the public hearing and part of it's not.
So, no combining?
Well, just, just because it's in one or the other, you obviously could not combine the public hearing item with the site plan item and say, we're not gonna have a public record.
Let's just go with the rezoning and that gets us out of the public hearing.
Okay. We are proposing to rezone 15 Oakridge Street, which is directly south of 300 West Putnam Avenue, where we're proposing to construct the new Lamborghini dealership. Under the P-zone requirements, it has to have, it has to abut the commercial zone. In this case, we have the general business or the GB zone immediately to the north of this piece. We're proposing to have 21 parking spaces and to have heavy landscaping around the east and south portion.
Well, that all gets into, that all gets into the site plan. Let's stick with the, just the rezoning of the P-zone. Tell us why it's a good-
Well, that's, that's part of, that's part of what we're proposing-
No, I know, but-
-in the P-zone itself. I realize it's part of the-
But it's not part of the rezoning.
But it is part of what we discuss when we look at the regulations for rezoning. As part of the 21 parking spaces, we would look to use this for employee and service vehicle parking associated with the use on the property at 300 West Putnam.
Again, I think we're kind of getting into the site plan aspect of this. Is there, tell us why this is a good thing for a P-zone? What does a P-zone allow you to do with it? What, what is it, how does it benefit the neighborhood? If it's to benefit, I think one of the benefits is to be for other people, not just for the-
And, and the proposed use would be open, so it's not to be gated by, in any means. P-zones are to provide parking as assistance to the commercial zones, which they abut. And as I indicated, this, it does abut the GB zone. And we're looking to use it in conjunction with the, the activity on 300 West Putnam Avenue.
But it wouldn't deny somebody from McDonald's coming over here and using it. It wouldn't deny somebody across the street of Oak, Street, which is in CGB or, CGB or?
That's GB as well.
GB, thank you.
It, it would not. Traditionally, as the P-zones have been adopted, for example, the one behind, just to the north of the Mercedes dealer at 261 West Putnam, that is used as, and was counted frankly by the commission as part of its, its parking count.
Yeah.
And that was a recent site plan special permit that was approved.
That I think is the anomaly. I don't know if we have others that have, that Pat, Pat, do we have others that use the P-zone as a part of their?
Well, that, that would have been the most recent example. You have the P-zone behind Stop &amp; Shop.
But it was already, the, the P-zone was already there behind, we didn't create a P-zone for that.
No, but we are adding substantial square footage to that building.
Right.
Increasing its footprint and coverage. And the commission at that time did recognize it as part of the, the parking count for, for that auto dealership.
Partially because it was back. In other words, nobody had access to it, except Mercedes.
Not without driving through the rest of the Mercedes property. That's true.
Yeah.
And here, we do have access directly onto Oakridge Street.
Okay.
And so, would it be available? Yes. Would, does my client anticipate using this at its full capacity all the time? Probably not. This is a, this is a, my apologies, blending the site plan with the rezoning, but this is a very low-volume use. I, I think if, if the commission were to look at this with, as a Toyota dealership, you might look at it much differently. And, and to that end, when you do get into the special, the, the site plan issues, I, I think there is a way of dealing with that. But we do not see this as a high-intensity use for the P-zone, that it would be solely for parking, as is required by the regulation. And that we have a, a planting plan, which I believe more than adequately screens the residential properties to the south.
As you know, for zoning changes, the secretary's feeding me lines here. Needs to be in compliance with the POCD. Can you tell us how it complies?
Actually, that question came up because we had to appear in front of the zoning Board of Appeals for a special exception for, for 300.
Right.
And they were wondering about the adequacy of parking, whether the parking could be provided properly. And under the, the plan of conservation development, you're looking to support those types of commercial uses along your main corridor, which in this case is a state highway, Route 1. And the P-zone is set up to augment and to support those services along the heavily traveled and developed commercial part of the town. And it, except for a few examples here and there, for the most part, the P-zones are directly behind properties that front on Route 1.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Hegney, so if, we're understanding is this, it's, it's use as primarily parking open to anybody who would like to use it, then if we, we can discuss, you know, that, I think you had mentioned that it would be left open for anybody to use on the street, so on and so forth.
It will not be gated.
It has to be.
Okay. I was thinking in a sense of, of public parking, but I guess it's not a, it's not that.
No.
It's to support-
But it's for use.
It's to support the businesses, yeah.
Okay.
The, it would be the immediate commercial properties in the area.
Okay. The comments I have would actually come under probably site plans.
Any other comments on the rezoning?
There's no law. Well, we haven't heard from much.
No, we don't. We just have to submit it. Okay, anybody?
Yeah, what happens in the scenario where, let's say, one of the surrounding businesses decides to get there at 8:00 AM and, and, I mean, in other words, to Mr. Maitland's comments about the impact this would have on the neighborhood, is there need for this other than for the proposed use that's coming up shortly? Like, in other words, are there cars parked all over the place? Right.
Actually, I, I think the other auto dealers in the area have worked much harder in recent years, and I think has resulted in less complaints to your staff and to zoning enforcement, on providing parking for their employees.
How would you manage it, I guess, is the question? So let's say, one of the auto dealers decides, you know, there's a P-zone over there, go ahead and start parking over there, and there's conflict. I mean, how, how do you foresee that getting resolved?
The, although they are in competition, the auto dealers do in fact speak to each other and, and, and deal with each other on a regular basis, and that would be something that certainly could be worked out easily. I, I don't see that as becoming conflict at all.
P-zone, it's a P-zone.
Without permitting the extension of non-residential or non-residential-
The McDonald's parking lot in this proposed parking?
That, there's no required screening between the commercial and the P-zone. That's true.
Isn't there some kind of setback? I mean, they, they, there is no setback on parking?
I know, but it says the condition is it-
No.
Remains the extension of a non-residential-
You got a lot as well. So, you could, you could, on a commercial lot, you could pave to the property.
Although you do have more than 10 parking spaces in the P-zone area, so you don't-
Don't I have any kind of green area requirement?
Right, under 160.
Actually, this question did come up while we were dealing with the ARC. And we augmented the plantings here and also in this area. And they asked us to provide for essentially what they, what they refer to as like a living fence. It's a stainless steel fence with vines growing on it in between. And we do put three street trees here on the south and, and north sides of the P-zone, as well as having very dense evergreens along the east and south.
So you meet the requirement for one shade tree for every 10 cars?
Yes, we have three shade trees here associated with it.
And the trees shall be evenly distributed throughout the parking area and should be set in squares, which are flush with the pavement?
Actually, they're in planting beds, so they're protected by curbs.
Extension of, right.
So we have one here, one here, and one there.
But they're not distributed in-
Okay, Mr. Hegney. So, I don't think-
Ms. Albin.
-that this complies with 6117, because-
118.
117. I just had this argument with Richard. Okay? Getting pissy here. Okay, so, 6117 says-
It's only 10 o'clock.
The purpose of the P-zone is to provide for needed parking in the, in the business areas-
Yep.
-without permitting the extension of non-residential activities into residential areas.
Correct. So you can't, we can't build a building, we can't build a building there.
I didn't say, I left that part out. It says, "Without permitting the extension of non-residential buildings or non-residential activities into residential areas." You are proposing a non-residential activity into the R6, into the residential area. That is not the purpose of the P-zone.
That's what all the P-zones are. All of the ones that the commission has approved-
I'm telling you that this, if I-
...provide for parking for commercial uses in a residential area that's rezoned to P.
Mr. Hegney, I have not been here for any of the previous approvals creating a P-zone.
I have.
No?
Hmm?
No, there was one we did on the Post Road.
We did one on Soundview Avenue.
There was one on the Post Road, and it was already commercial. This is a residential zone into which we are extending non-residential activities, and the purpose of the P-zone does not permit that. It's the way it's written. In plain English-
Then, then you'd never do it.
Well, there you go.
But then, then what's the purpose of this regulation?
You can convert, in a commercial zone, you could take a piece of property and you can make it a P. But the way I read this, you are not-
No, all, all of, all of the-
I get it.
-P-zones are, were changed from residential to P.
Not responsible for what they did. That's not how this reads. It says that you provide for needed off-street parking without permitting the extension of non-residential activities into residential areas.
Right. All you can do is use it for parking. You can't conduct-
Without permitting, the moment your employees park there, you are doing a non-residential activity in a non, in a residential area.
But it can only be created in a residential area, because if a P-zone was in a business zone-
Then we wouldn't need it at all. I could just use it for parking.
I'm not responsible for who wrote this, but if I take how it's written, you're not complying with how it's written.
That is sort of standing it on its head.
The question I will ask Katie, and I, it's probably getting in this gray area about being site planned.
Yeah, which is hard not to.
Which is hard not to, and so, excuse me for, but-
Excuse me for-
My cats, I can't hurt them.
...is, if the front piece that is in the business zone can't use that lot to satisfy any of its parking requirements.
Huh?
Right? So, the, the front lot needs to support all the parking required for that building, including the expansion.
That's correct.
And so-
That's E, subsection E.
And then so, the way I'm interpreting that regulation is you can't create a P-zone and then move required parking to the P-zone.
Right. Right. It's, it says, "A P-zone may not be used to meet parking requirements set forth in section 158 for non-residential uses or in section 155 for residential uses in adjoining business zones." So, exactly what you just said.
Right. And the expansion would be, if you're expanding the front zone, and you couldn't do it because of the, you need in the parking in the rear.
Okay, either way, we're saying it the-
But that has nothing to do with whether this is changed from an R6 zone to a P-zone.
But the way I read the regulation, there was no intent of expanding non-residential activities into a residential area.
It just says that to provide parking for business uses.
Without permitting, without permitting the extension, I'm gonna keep saying it. I'm gonna just sit here and I'm gonna, your cats are out of the box.
And what, that's what we're saying.
You can't hurt us anymore.
That's what I'm saying.
In a different way.
But then, why, why would you do it?
No clue. Whoever wrote this, I don't know, but that's what it says.
That's not how it's been utilized for at least 10 times, as the staff indicated in your report.
Well, don't even start me on Toyota. Okay?
I, I was thinking more about the very substantial addition that was done to Mercedes at 261 West Putnam, where the P-zone parking was counted as part of the necessary parking for that facility.
But it was adjoining.
It was approved by this commission recently.
Well, I think this is, this is going back and forth.
This is joining.
I think we need determination on that, right? And-
For council?
No, or pull the application, so it's part of the record.
I wanna look at all, at this point, I think, I think we have to look up. I get it, because I know when I look at what's been approved, I know it doesn't work with these words.
I, I would like to assist you in looking at that.
Oh, I'd love that.
No, you don't have to do your own research. You can ask the applicant to provide whatever you need.
More than that, the staff would be greatly appreciative if you spared them having to research this stuff, so that would be great if you all give us-
They appear to be-
You don't even have to apologetically ask for it.
You can just say, "We want you to provide this to us."
Right.
And I, I have heard that, and I will provide it to you.
Because the language doesn't work.
And then, I think, Mr. Warner-
I mean, you read the language and it just-
...address this.
And Katie's having such a run of success making regulatory changes right now, we can change this, too.
Mr. Hegney, you can just check, you can check the case law on that.
Good luck.
I, I'm happy to provide that additional information, and to the extent that we can get that to you sooner rather than later, I would like to have this continued to-
Okay, so we'll leave this open.
26th.
We're gonna talk about the site plan anyway, so.
Oh, yeah, we are. It's on the agenda.
Mike wants to speak on that.
I don't think he wants to, well, I will ask if public comment on the P-zone.
I did his work for him. The other thing, Mr. Hegney, if I could ask you on the P-zone-
Yes, ma'am.
-is, the POCD is pretty specific on, on supporting residential zones. I couldn't find anything that said, "And you must, you must help car dealerships find a way to get sufficient parking." I couldn't find- I couldn't find, being a little facetious, but you know, if you could cite the ways in which the POCD, the last one, because I could not find anything that really supported this zone change. And again, once you show the history of all the stuff we've done before, this is moved.
It will become very obvious.
Yeah, it'll become very obvious.
Sure, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're done with the public?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw him up there, he was trying to get up there.
And when the man stays till 10 o'clock...
My name is Mike Warner, I live in Lafayette Court, and I'm not going to comment on the legalities here, it's over my, it's over my pay grade. I did want to give some context and say what I originally was going to say. The context is, this is a street with a lot of duplexes and parking demands. The residents on this street pay for their parking. Unlike you or I who park in front of our house, they pay an annual fee to the town to be able to park on this street because it's a, a lot of duplexes in this street, it's pretty dense. So this is a residential street, a lot of working-class folks who live there. And I was here because of the principle of taking residentially zoned spaces and using it for commercial. And in that context, it just doesn't sound fair. The second item I would just mention briefly is, my thought was, well, maybe if they call it a public lot and put public parking...
Or if they made a deal with the condos.
Fine, but I know that the people on that street are probably in bed by now, getting sleep for the next day's work, and they may not be here. I know a couple of people who live on that street, so I would ask you to take this seriously. It's an important thing. Taking residential space and using it for a commercial purpose is a big deal, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hegney, you said that that lot was not going to be completely used?
Not under the, what we're proposing in the next application you're going to hear.
Would it sound crazy to provide some residential parking?
We're not taking any residential parking, we're taking a private residential parcel and tearing the house down.
I don't think we can do it under a zoning change.
No, we can't, but if, say the applicant thought it was a good idea...
Either change the zone or you don't change, it's a yes or no.
If the P-zone also provided... No, but if the applicant happened to mention that they were going to have that P-zone provide residential parking as well, that would be a really nice thing.
I think that's something that we should discuss under the site plan.
You got to follow the rules.
Shoot.
I know. Well, listen, just save it up because you're going to let it fly the next application. Does anybody else want to speak on this?
Jim?
Okay. We're done, that closes the public hearing, thank you. Yes, we left it open, it's being left open.
No, just the hearing, but not the item.
This is left open.
Not necessarily in that order.
No, no, I think it was in order. Okay, now we can go bats out on the site plan. Oh, sure. Oh, no, the next two items, public can comment. Yeah. We just closed the public hearing, now we're going to go back to the regular meeting. So just that the court reporter gets to leave. All right.
So here, we're not mixing the public hearing with the site plan or regular meeting. The first, item 14, is for the site plan for demolishing the house on 15 Oak Ridge and doing the planting and landscaping. Do you want me to incorporate that in with the site plan for 300 West Putnam as well, or do you want me to keep them separate?
Well, if you want to keep those two, because they are now in the regular meeting and they do sort of go back and forth, although they're not supposed to, because they should be standing on their own, but I mean, to the extent that we refer to one or the other, it's going to be hard not to. However, we should try to focus on the parking lot. That's what...
Well, the main part of the site plan for 15 Oak Ridge is to remove the existing house, two-family house that's on the property, and to create 21 parking spaces. We have an extensive landscaping plan that was reviewed with the Architectural Review Committee, which approved it. They had a number of requests. They wanted us to augment the plantings and to provide two street trees at the entrance on Oak Ridge Street. They wanted us to augment the landscaping between 300 and 15 Oak Ridge. And they wanted a screen between the two parking areas here that would provide for some type of green treatment, such as vines to grow on a...
There's no dirt for the vines.
We looked at it and we could provide a small planting strip. There was, I just did one in front of ARC...
That one, next one did not do well.
For what the, what was the commuter cleaners in Coscom, and they put a wire mesh on the wall and allowed, and are allowing vines to grow on it.
Yeah, but as long as you've got some dirt to put them in. I have, but I have a problem.
That was the only thing that ARC wanted us to change from this plan that they reviewed at their main meeting.
Just to let you know, we did not get a copy of that landscape plan in our packet over the weekend, so it's...
I will make sure that everyone has copies.
But I have some other, I have a question about it. One of the conditions in 618, 6118, is that this be a separation of 15 feet from any residential property. And that doesn't happen along the south side.
The lot, because of its configuration, does narrow as we get to Oak Ridge Street, so that we have roughly 10 feet here rather than that 15.
I don't have it as 10, I have it closer to 8, but that's all right. It doesn't hit 15, we both agree.
And we probably can modify that to allow for it and...
I think you would have to do it, and I think it's possible, it looks like it might be possible to do that. But the driveway entrance has got to be 10 feet away. And I think you might barely make that. Again, by scaling it, it looks like that might happen, but I think there should be some dimensions.
And we could shift that, we'll put that dimension on the plan. And if we need to, we can shift it a little to the north.
But the 15 feet must, it's got to be maintained, and it's not. And I think the other thing is, it's a little disconcerting sometimes to have 15 feet plus or minus. I'd like not to have, there should be, there should be no plus or minus on that dimension, it's 15 feet without the plus or minus.
Or it should be at least just plus.
Well, if it's plus, why don't, we have a very good engineer, and I'm sure if it's plus, he can say...
We'll have it accurate, we'll have it done accurately.
Okay. And that is to the parking, and I think that's the way the regulation reads, so the wall, you know, the retaining wall would be included in that 15 feet?
Yes.
You spoke of... You spoke of the Architectural Review Committee asking you to put some additional planting. We're getting into, because it can't happen on this site, it's only happening on the other site, right?
Well...
Those two trees are on this site.
These two areas were, the ARC asked us to augment, and that's what's reflected with these two trees here and the plantings associated with them. They also asked us to augment this area here...
But that you're losing a parking space.
Which is, well, we did, we lost a parking space doing that by adding that landscaping.
Shot yourself in the foot.
Well, as you look at these site plans, you're doing a balance between what is to make it aesthetically pleasing and appropriate in the neighborhood and providing the parking that will be needed. And given the low volume of activity that will be associated with this particular facility, I think that that's a good balance to be struck.
I mean, we're in the next project, because this is dividing on. All right, there was no, the other thing is this, the, there was no indication on your drawings that there was going to be this fence between the, between the P-zone?
No, that was something that ARC requested of us, and our landscape architect will be modifying the plan to provide for that.
Lighting. We got a...
ARC left it to us.
I know. We got a letter from...
Your secretary is being helpful.
As we know, secretaries are in dispens...
I can't be interrupted too often because my mind will wander and I won't be able to get back on.
That's what I'm here for.
The letter we got from you on the lighting...
Yes.
It wasn't clear where the lighting was on the plans, but I, and again, the plans you gave us with that are too small to be useful. Well, no, it's the lighting here that's... So what happened, and again, I don't know if I've got this letter that you sent us, I think I do, yeah. This, the lighting plan for the site, this is for the whole site as opposed to just the parking lot? But if I look at, you do say you are, it says the landscape plan for the P-zone was modified to remove lighting fixtures, so now it complies as well. The, the plan that was submitted with your letter, I mean, it's almost unreadable, but I can see that you're only putting two lighting fixtures...
Let me just highlight it here.
Thank you.
When we first submitted this to ARC, we had six lighting fixtures.
Six or seven.
And now we reduced it to three with one located here...
Right.
One located here, and one located here.
Is the one, the last one you said, is that a double-headed fixture?
No, these are all single-headed fixtures.
Yeah, it looked like there were two dots there on your drawing, but, okay. So there's three lighting fixtures on the parking area?
Correct.
I can't tell, I know you've got it, the photometrics are shown on this, but they're impossible to read, so...
Well, when we're resubmitting the additional information you're requesting on this project, we will submit to you large-scale plans so that they're legible.
All right.
There will be certain times of the year, this time of year not being one of them, where lighting might be needed. Lighting would be off, just as we've discussed with the other auto dealers along the Post Road at 7 o'clock.
I think we need control over it.
Yeah, I want to have those light switches, I'm really so done with this. Who was it that is violating again? We've got these two dealers violating right now. Audi and Toyota are both on...
Actually, if I can just digress a bit, with Audi, Mr. Argento, the neighbor to the north, had made it clear that there were issues. I got involved, I got the facilities director for New Country Motor Car Group involved, and Mr. Argento now has his cell phone number. And he does respond to it. And he has taken Mr. Argento's comments seriously, has met with him and spoken with him on the phone a number of occasions to make sure that compliance is being done, because frankly, they put a very complicated, expensive system in to make sure that it would work right.
Why do they need lighting?
Because sometimes it's dangerous in like the middle of winter.
Yeah, it's really during the winter months, you don't need them at all now.
The dealership is open at those hours.
Well, the people using the parking lot might want to feel safe at that time of the year.
No, no, but the dealership is open at those hours?
Till 6:00 PM.
So the lights could go off at 6:00?
They could, yeah, they could, they could go off at 6:00, they don't have to go off at 7:00.
Keep in mind, this is a P-zone, it's open for...
Not yet.
We're discussing this application.
We're talking about this site plan that's assumed that it's a P-zone, but, you know, I think...
Whether it is or isn't, this is the assumption we're making, so we got to, in fairness, treat it that way.
Quite frankly, this P-zone's kind of the tail on the dog, because the next application is the driver for this P-zone. Because if you don't get through the next site plan application, this parking is moved.
May well be. But the order in our agenda is this is in came first, and the driver, as you say, is last, so we're backing into it.
I'm just saying that I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this particular application because it's, it's a parking lot that needs to meet the landscaping, the lighting, with the assumptions.
And dimensions.
Well, dimensions and...
To that end, we'll revise the plan to meet the 15-foot screen and the 10-foot separation of the entrance to the residential boundary line.
And the lights would be done, I'm assuming that, I assume that ARC reviewed the fixtures...
Yes.
And they were, and I assume they're LED and they're all controlled so that there's not going to, well, you'll show us in the photometrics.
Yes. Yeah, the photometrics do show that it complies with the regulations.
Okay. Any other comments on the site plan for the P-zone? All right. Oh, no? No, that's the last one we're going to hear, now we're going to talk about the... Item number 15 is the final site plan to demolish the existing building, construct a new two-story motor vehicle service, sales and service building for Greenwich Lamborghini.
You may have wondered why I submitted those first two applications. And the reason for that is, my third application, somehow the order seems to have been a little backwards.
You're building their building from the top down and not the foundation up, so whatever.
It is a difficult task. Yeah, the first one, keep in place. This is at the corner of Oak Ridge Street and West Putnam Avenue. It's had a number of uses over the years, as I think the most recent irritant to the neighborhood was the Greenwich Hardware Rentals, also an irritant to the Commission's Zoning Enforcement Office, and actually, the prior owner of the property who ended up getting arrested because of his tenants' activities on the property. Sometimes it's not worth coming from Florida. And before that, it had been used as Partridge and Rockwell appliance sales. We're proposing to retain the basement and the foundation and build up on it. To that end, we appeared in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for variances of front yard setback, street side and side yard setback, as well as a special exception for automotive use, all of which were granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It requires that we add a... It requires that we add a, in addition to the rear of the building, so that we can provide for adequate service. So a portion of the building is existing, and, and that's the area where the showroom is, coming back.
Well, is the, is the building existing, or is the existing building being totally demolished?
It's, we're going to use the foundation and the basement.
Foundation and, okay.
Just the foundation and the basement. And then we'll add on to the rear to provide for the service bays and the, and the detail bay. I know there were a couple of questions on why we had grasscrete in this area. We went back and forth with A R C on that. Currently, there's a driveway that comes in off of West Putnam Avenue, which we will be eliminating. They wanted a defined, honest-to-goodness street tree, so this London Plain, or what we call them, sycamores, would be located where the driveway currently is. But the entrance to bring cars in and out of the showroom is on the east side of the building. So in order to get cars in and out of the showroom, we're showing this area as grasscrete rather than as any other type of, of landscaping. And this is shown as pavement, so that we can get in on an angle to the detail bay.
So what are the service bays for?
To provide repair and service to the cars that the dealer sells.
Sometimes these fancy cars can be in the shop a long time while they're ordering parts from Europe.
That's, that's, that sounds like someone speaking from experience.
Yes, I, I do speak from experience.
I'm just talking out loud. You've got a car sales and service business, that the rear lot can't be used for car store.
Right.
You've got a sales room of how many vehicles, because you're-
Three.
You've only got six parking spots on site, or eight parking spots on site?
We have, we have three vehicles in the showroom. This isn't the type of dealership where you walk in and say, do you have, do you have one in, well, that might be difficult, too, but, do you have one in blue or one in green? This is, you walk in, you work with the sales staff, you, you look at the various options, you're, you're designing this car, which won't be delivered, it's not going to be in the lot, it's going to be delivered to you months later, after it's designed and, and built for you. So it's, it's not, it, it's, it's a unique type of sales facility, where you really don't need an inventory like you would at, at Audi, for example, where you have the parking deck in the back that's filled with new cars. That, that's not how this, this operates.
So how do the cars get delivered?
By single, flatbed, enclosed trucks.
They will be unloaded where?
In the, in the area right behind the service bays.
They have to back in?
They'll probably back in on, on Oak Ridge, yeah, and back in here. But it would be one car coming at a time in an enclosed truck. Yeah, and, well, that, frankly, as Larry's reminding me, same, same for the service. They're not, people don't want these cars driven, except when they're behind the wheel, and you don't drive down, even with Porsche, most of the, the, the cars are picked up at the customer's house and brought to service, they don't bring them there themselves.
And how long, on average, does it take to service a car? Like, in other words, you've got however many bays you have, how, how many cars you think you'd be doing a week?
They could be there for more than one day. It's not that, it's not that we're doing-
They're likely to be there more than one day. You wouldn't need four service bays for this kind of an operation, if you weren't, if you could get a people in and out in a day.
Yeah.
And then how many people are there to work on one car? I mean, I know that's probably not how this thing works, you go, but, given what the chairman's saying-
We're looking at having two, two technicians as staff.
So, did you do a parking study? Do we have an operational, I mean, how many staff, how many repair, how many car washes?
We, we did provide a letter indicating what that would be. We would have a, we're proposing a staff of 10, which includes an accountant, three sales staff, a service manager, parts manager, two service technicians, and two valet drivers.
To valet to the houses?
Right.
Well, they don't valet them to the houses, do they? They don't, they put them on a truck and drive them to the house.
They'll probably pick them up by a car, by truck, rather, and bring the cars in that way.
Bring the owner to the, to the dealer.
Mr. Chagney, are you storing, are you storing any, a flatbed on-site, or?
No, it would be kept off-site. Probably a service rather than, than having just a, a truck dedicated. Frankly, this is an extremely low-volume dealership, and, you know, in thinking about that, I'm cognizant of what the commission would wonder, if this doesn't work out, who's going to end up in here? And I think you, you need to be thinking about that, because I think this is a unique site with a unique, with the, a unique manufacturer, and if-
I did think about that.
And, well, and my thought on it is that if there were a change in manufacturer, so that another manufacturer is coming in other than Lamborghini, that it would have to come back to the commission to see if the new manufacturer, I don't want to say dealer, because you could have franchise, or auto stores are sold between, BMW was owned by another dealer, and then they sold it to Penske, but it's still BMW. But if the manufacturer changes, if it's a different car that's being sold there, then it should come back here to see if that use and activity is appropriate.
So, but, the issue we have, or I personally have, I almost hit two of them yesterday, are the people running across the streets-
Yes.
-between operations?
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's Mercedes, whether it's Audi, there's somebody running between Miller and the new stuff up top, and you see it day in and day out. My biggest concern is, if you make this, it gets acquired, and now it's getting acquired by Miller, that's just expanded across the street, and we're doing nothing to, for pedestrian And the other question is, it says we need 38 spots, and you're providing 29. So, that's what this cheat sheet says.
That's including the ones in the parking zone, the P-zone, so I think-
Right.
What we've got to deal with now.
But also not including the service bays and the cars in the showroom.
I was giving him the benefit of the previous-
Approval.
Approvals, but we're still short nine spaces.
Well, I count us having eight outdoor spaces, five bays-
Seven.
And three, and three in the showroom. And again, when I did Mercedes not too long ago, we counted the showroom.
We've counted those.
We counted the service bays as one space, and the, and the detailing bay is considered a service bay, but you counted as well.
We have, in the past, to be consistent, counted those as meeting the parking, because there's a car there, or could be.
I'm just reading what our standard report says, so.
Well, disagree with it just a little bit.
That's, that's a little different than how we have looked at it in the past.
Well, because in the past, we've counted, in other words, the five, you've got five service bays, which generates the parking demand of 25 cars.
Okay.
In the past, we have counted the cars which are parked in those service bays as one of the five being required for the service bay. So, they had eight on the outside, now they've just told us today they lost one of those, so that's-
No, 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 we lost them earlier. The, we have eight. We had nine.
No, but the parking spa, you told us that you lost a space to get planting.
Yeah, but that was when we had one more space. No, we have total of eight spaces.
I've looked at these plans a number of times, and every time I look at it, I see eight spaces there.
Yeah, right.
And no landscaping.
No, that's with the landscaping here.
It may be on that plan, but it's not on the plans he has submitted to us. That's the problem. So, I'm looking, I'm looking at this plan, and it shows eight spaces there. And I have a problem with-
Right, and it's, and it's this area here that was a space that we're-
And that's number eight. So if you're taking-
No, number eight is right here.
But you can't put it, if you put it back there and then look at the drawing you've given us on your traffic movements, it doesn't work, because you're, you're planning on that space being, if you go to that plan on parking movements, turning, parking plan and turning movement, sheet three.
I'm just trying to get to this order. How many spaces do you feel, Richard, he's deficient?
Oh, well, it's probably deficient, there's 16 from the 38, he's probably deficient, 22, 20. Right? Yeah, 20. 20, 22. Because he's got, I mean, we got to find out about this phantom, space number eight. But assuming there's eight there, there's eight in the building, that's 16.
Yep.
16 from 38 is 22. That's his deficiency. Obviously, 6158, the, the planning and zoning commission has the prerogative to make adjustments in that, but I don't think we can make, I don't think we can make a 22-car adjustment. There'd have to be some pretty special conditions to make that. So, obviously, what they've been counting on is using the P-zone to, to make up that However, that doesn't, that's a number, but getting back to this, it doesn't show the circulation of the, of the cars coming in and out of the showroom, which would be interesting to get, and also, the, doesn't show it. That's all I'm saying. Because where you've moved, your plan for passenger vehicle pulling in and out of the detail bay, can you find that one?
Yes, that's this one right here.
Okay, so that shows it, that, that still shows you with eight parking spaces where the, where something else is, you're telling me now, that's not there, but it's located further up on the sheet.
There's a, space eight is right here.
Is your sheet dated March 23rd?
No, this is, well, it's, the original date is March 23rd, this is per D P W comments, May 18th of this year.
Guess what? We don't have it.
I will make sure that you have all the plans that we've submitted to engineering.
And that, the other problem is, some of the drawings show the eight spaces there. None of the drawings that I've looked at show any of those spaces being removed for landscaping. The one drawing I have, which shows the eighth space being relocated, not in its location here, but being backed up a bit, would interfere with the circulation coming out of the detail bay. Now, if you're saying you accounted for that, I just don't have the drawings, that's all.
And then we'll, we'll make sure that you have that for our next hearing.
That would be helpful. My struggles will be reduced over the weekend, trying to make it, how does this work?
And although we didn't show it as a, as a movement to get the cars into the showroom, our architect did go over that to make sure that, if you're having a showroom, that you can get cars into it.
A couple of tight turns to be maneuvering a $400,000 automobile around in.
Uh, pushed into there.
Pushed, okay.
It would not be driven.
All right, Larry leaving from S.C. Minor. One of the things that I wanted to say is, is that none of these cars are driven into the service bays or into the showroom.
Do you start them up when they're in the service bay?
They're, they're, they get, they get started in the service bay to get worked on.
But Larry, that doesn't help your job, because if that's what you're saying, then I want to see the delivery truck, and how it gets, and how you maneuver the cars on the spot, because I don't think you have enough space, if you're delivering them in a tow truck.
Okay.
And, and so, to me, if that's how these cars are coming in and out of this site, that makes this site even worse.
They come, they come in one at a time, first of all, and I get that, I understand that.
But soon as the truck comes, you can't maneuver anything else on the site. So please show us with the truck, you're, you're not helping your case.
Got it. No, I understand, I understand what you're saying. When we first started-
Because I know what's going to happen, because I see it on the post road. The truck's going to pull on the street, and offload on the street, and then pull into your driveway. That's what's going to happen, because you see it everywhere else on the post road.
All of this, well, all of this was to eliminate them, enter, the, the original concept plan was to have the cars drive into the showroom from the post road, and we said that's not going to happen, the, this commission isn't going to let that happen at all, because there's just too much-
On the post road?
From the post road. That's not going to happen. That's what we said. So that's why we went through all of these different variations on the theme of how to make it work. I understand what you're requesting, and we will, we will complete that request by giving it to you.
It's a very compact site.
Yes, it is.
And it's going to take a lot of maneuvering between staff, customers, trucks.
How many, let's get down to the, how many per week or per day, do you, would you expect one delivery per week? What, what, what do you expect in, in volume, and?
I, I-
Well, could you get that information?
I think the dealer would probably be ecstatic with one delivery a week.
Okay. Well, I think it's important to get that into perspective here, because-
And also the delivery for the service, not just delivery of new cars, but for service, too.
Oh, yeah, but that was again with the-
Because the other, the other question is, can you reduce the number of bays and just reduce the size of the building?
Answer to that is no. Lamborghini has their requirements as well, and that's why we've come to you with this. This is the minimum that they will require. I'm sorry?
So you're in between a rock and a hard place.
It feels that way right now, yes. I, I do want to point out a few of the very positive aspects of this before we continue.
Where's the used cars, or the pre-owned cars?
The pre-ownedies.
Sold.
Uh, I, I don't think they're planning on keeping them on-site, but I can certainly ask about that.
Nobody ever returns them?
But they sell them, are they?
It just showed interior car parking plan.
They did.
I didn't see it.
It's on the architectural plan.
Yeah, there is that on the architectural plan.
Not in the-
Oh.
It wasn't in my, I can, might have been.
Here.
This is the first floor plan, it shows the three vehicles. This is the first floor plan, it shows the three vehicles in the showroom, the vehicle, the vehicle in the detail bay, and then the four service bays.
Seems amazing for the...
This is sheet A 1.0.
For the small number of cars being used that, that they would require you to have the four service bays, but I do understand that to some degree.
I'll, I'll try to get a, an average of how long the vehicle remains at the service facility.
I can tell you some will be there weeks.
It depends on the part that's needed, yeah.
Where, where's the nearest Lamborghini dealership to here?
I'm talking about Porsche.
Or service. Is there...
No Italian cars.
I don't know.
Been curious.
Uh, I'll, I'll find out, Kitty.
Will there be any interaction between Audi, the corporate owner of Lamborghini, and the sites?
I, I do not believe so. There, this is a, a separate dealer from New Country which owns Audi, Audi dealership here in town. I do not believe there's going to be any contact with them at all.
Any other comments from the commission?
So, this is actually part of the Audi, Audi dealership group, this, this...
No.
No.
No, New Country doesn't own this, this is owned by a, a group out of Philadelphia.
Okay, so there's actually no relationship to any of the other dealerships?
That's correct. This is, this is somebody who has a number of stores in the Philadelphia area and is looking to open up here.
I'm not too sure if you were associated with the Lamborghini dealership that we had.
Actually, that was New Country.
Why did that fail?
I think it had something to do with being opened around September 15th, 2008.
Okay.
And the, the economy tanked, and so did the dealership, and they closed it.
Kind of following through on something you said about actually, if this doesn't work, we have another dealership that's kind of tight, kind of strange, it's not working specifically for Lamborghini, which is moving million-dollar cars around that take forever to service and all that stuff, and then the next dealership comes in and, you know, the guy selling Chevrolet's, it's a whole different castings.
Yeah, but I don't...
That would be my biggest concern, is that, we, we can't think of it, can't think of it just as Lamborghini.
I can give you another example. About 15 years ago, the commission approved a Lotus dealer on Railroad Avenue.
Yes, I remember that.
And it, it didn't last very long.
No.
And then it became a Japanese restaurant, and then that didn't last very long, and then it became a Chinese restaurant that didn't last very long, and then it was an Italian restaurant that didn't last for a while, and now it's an Indian restaurant, so...
We're almost all the way around.
Hey, listen, if it becomes a restaurant, they got a lot of parking spaces.
Yeah, I, I did, since there are a few things I did want to point out that are positive before we continue it, one of the things that the commission has been talking about is a, is the boulevard look, so that the parking isn't in the front of the building, between the building and the street, but that the parking is behind, and that you, you create this positive view of the building along the main thoroughfare, and why the Architecture Review Committee wanted this main street tree, the London Plain, in this location, and also bringing the sidewalk back so that there's curb, grass, sidewalk, and then additional landscaping. Same on Oak Ridge Street. Currently, it's pavement, you, you can't tell where the street ends and the parking and property is for the Oak Ridge side of the building. All that would be ripped out, there would be no parking along the side the way it is now, and it would be, again, curb, grass, sidewalk, and then landscaping. So, we think that this is a very positive aspect for the, for the corner and for the area as part of redoing the building, and it does sacrifice parking to be able to do that. So, we, we think that that is positive. I just wanted to touch on the hours of operation, which we did submit, they would be 8:30 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, and closed on Sundays, of course, state law is dealers are closed on Sundays. I, I think that's, I, I understand the, the information that you're looking for on the three applications that we have, we'll, we'll get that together, provide more information on circulation onsite and, and the P-zone, and come back to you.
Before we close this out, did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I just think you all raised, I'm sorry.
Mike Warner for the record.
Mike, Mike Warner, who's keeping a record?
Over here. We tape you.
Two tapes.
Mike Warner from Greenwich at Lafayette Court. I think you've raised some very good points. One is workers crossing the street. Right now, it's like a video game, trying to navigate route, and I think if it's a positive, you need a positive restriction on any operational connection with a dealership on the other side of the street, and any, any subsequent relationship on the other side of the street. I don't know if you can do that, but...
I don't know if we can do that. Kind of sounds like we're staying to trade.
But that kind of a condition, I mean, a condition of some sort.
Well, we could, yeah.
Number two is noise. I love the sound of a Lamborghini, I love the sound of a, of a Ferrari, and a Maserati, and even Steve McQueen's Mustang in that movie. But the question is, are test drives going to be part of this sales approach? And where do the test drives occur?
Doesn't sound like it.
Will people go in and say, I'd like to drive one of these?
Yeah.
And so, I would ask you guys to think about that as well. Thank you for your work, I think you're asking all good questions. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying so late.
All right, do you, did you want to respond to any of that, or do we want to close it?
No, it...
I'm not close it, but I mean, leave it.
That has come up in terms of test drives, and when Roger Penske was in front of you, he said, I'm going to require all my employees to sign an agreement that they will not test drive in the residential areas, and if they do, they're terminated.
Okay.
And we, we would have a similar control here with, with test drives.
Can they test drive?
They all do. I mean, if you go to the board...
Can we close it, or do you want to talk anymore?
No, everything's going to be open.
No, leave it open, but I mean, close the meeting.
Just wanted to make sure you were awake.
We've got to close before 11.
Well, then, that's it.
Don't have much time.
Okay.
Good night, all.
Good night.
All right. 11 and 12.
Let's go to those two that we can decide and...
All righty.
Two or one?
Just two.
11 and 12.
Heidi Smith and the...
I'm going to do 11 first. The chairman has asked me for a motion. No, 11 is Heidi.
Oh. I didn't ask you for a motion, but I will.
Getting ahead of myself.
May I have a motion, please?
I hereby move approval of the final postal site plan and special permit applications, and so doing, the commission notes that IWWA issued a green sheet on 1212, that the conservation department's issued no comment on May 7th, that the applicant has a drainage exemption, and that the, the ZEO has okayed for zoning permit sign-off on 531. The health department has approved a 100% replacement area plan on 518. And any other outstanding staff and departmental comments? Any other comments, Mr. Chair?
Nope. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit applications for 88 Conyers Farm to construct the new poolhouse, et cetera. So, doing the commission notes that IWWA issued a permit, that the ZEO has okayed for zoning permit sign-off on the 1st of June, DPW Engineering on the 10th of May had comments that were to be submitted prior to zoning permit approval. The health department has approved the design for the poolhouse septic system on 521, and that the department, that the applicant has integrated the comments of the Conservation Commission into their plans. And any other outstanding...
Well, we've got to be very careful with the conservation, because she's saying other things.
She's, they've incorporated the wetlands.
The wetlands comments is...
Not conservation.
Okay, let's put it like that. And yes, and any other outstanding staff and departmental comments? Did we have anything else on that? I couldn't finally...
No, I think, I think you got the health department on the septic, it's okay, right?
Yep, I did.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.